Good morning. I now call the March thirteenth, twenty twenty five Administrative Briefing and Work Session to the Marion County School Board to order at nine AM. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. Mirroring and modeling how our students begin each day, I ask that you please pause with us for a moment of silence. Please join me. Thank you. Um, I would, at this time, I'd like, I'd like to ask Dr. Campbell to read our commitment statement for us.
Thank you Chair. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Good morning Attorney Powers. Would you read the rules for the public work session, please?
Absolutely, thank you. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call the Speaker's name in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain order, orderly conduct, and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez, please provide the proof of publication for today's meeting.
The notice for the March thirteenth, twenty twenty five work session was published in the Ocala Gazette on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Proof of publication has been attached to Board Docs under proof of publication.
Thank you Ms. Martinez. We'll now begin the work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing. Good morning, Dr. Gullett.
Good morning Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'll be very brief. And then we have some esteemed law enforcement officials with us here this morning for our first item. Uh, we, we know the spring break is coming, students, not yet. That's after today, so we're, we're looking forward to having everybody safely return after spring break. But Board, I do have one housekeeping item for you. Uh, previously at a board meeting, um, you discussed, and I think it was Dr. James had asked about some training for, um, principal certification, and I said I would check on the National Institute for School Leaders. We did get a quote board, and you can let me know how you want to proceed. For the school board to have an overview, the cost would be twenty-six thousand dollars. That would include, um, four-day offering delivered in two-day sessions. They can, um, adjust kind of how they, how they do the sessions, but that would be the cost. So you can think about it and get back to me, but I did want you to know that they did get back to us with a cost if the Board wants to proceed.
And is that the qualifications then, sorry, I was coughing. Is that the qualifications that would get, then lead to the, uh, individual having principal designation on their teaching certificate?
Uh, Board Member James, I, I would think yes, because this came from Ms. Harris. She's the one that worked with, um, Nissel on what those would be. It's, it's the overview. I don't know. There might be additional needs, um, outside of this, but this is that foundational piece that we have our principals go through for certification. Uh, there may be additional requirements outside of that, but this is one of the courses that our, um, principals do go through, um, to get the certification.
Okay, yeah, that, what I'm looking to know is, um, to participate in, starting in August, is the, the whatever is required for me to add principal designation to my teaching certificate? And if that means I'm paying for it personally, Board, I'm paying for it personally. But I think as an employee of this district who has, has a doctorate in leadership, it is more than appropriate for me to get principal designation on my teaching certificate? But, um, if I have to pay for it on my own, twenty-six divided by five, I'll pay the, what, fifty-two hundred dollars, but, um, I would like to participate that in August.
Thank you for that update, Dr. Gullett.
That concludes my, my briefing this morning. Thank you so much.
Okay. Good morning Board. As you know, we're, we're looking at our contracts, uh, for SROs for the next couple of years. Um, and you received, um, the financial piece of that to look over. But I asked the Sheriff-in-Chief to come in this morning because there's some things, um, I would like for them to share with you that we can't really put on paper. And so at, at this time, I invite Sheriff Billy Woods to come forward and, and talk to us about, um, what all you provide for us in this district and on our school campuses.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Always a pleasure to see each and every one of y'all. Glad to be here this morning. Um, Madam Chair, um, you help me out, what you're looking for, what you, uh, would like for me to speak on, um, in the direction, I'm a little bit lost.
Sure, Sheriff. I just wish that you would, um, elaborate on some of the conversation we had with Dr. Gullett a few weeks ago. There are things, um, outside of the realm of just, um, specific SRO services, um, that you provide on campuses each day, and I just wanted you to elaborate on some of those.
Um, okay, uh, forgive me Madam Chair, but, uh, I, I think what we provide, all of us provide, not just myself, but Chief Balkin and, and Chief Holland, we each provide the, uh, necessary services. If, if you're referring to what we're loo- looking at, and then let me just go ahead and cut to the chase. If we're looking at staying at we are, we'll be fine, okay? If you're looking at for me to take over each and every one of the schools, we will be fine, and I'm good with that. Um, you know, because I have been asked many questions, uh, about the whole, uh, scenario. Regarding taking over each of the schools, has it been a tat, would it be a task? Absolutely. Uh, I know that, uh, a couple of y'all have asked, would I be able to fill the positions? Absolutely. I will have bodies in each of the schools come the start of the school year. There will be deputies in each of the schools. Now, where I've asked, and we've had these discussions, Madam Chair, you, myself, and Dr. Gullett, uh, is where I ask for patience is the permanent individual that'll be in there. As you know, uh, principals, teachers, and, and the students, they get attached to their SRO regardless of who it is. And, which is a good thing, and they should. They build a relationship. They build a relationship annoying, not just in trust, whether it be, uh, Mike's officer, or, or Terry's, uh, officer, or my deputy. They build relationships. But having to hire somebody to fill these positions and get them in there permanently may not take a little bit longer than the three, four months now that I got left, uh, in order to, uh, put the permanent ones in there. But the individuals will be in there. Uh, some of the obstacles that have been brought up that I've heard, let me knock them out. Uh, is concerns about if a call goes down and communication, um, response times. So, and Chief Balkin and myself, actually this was just myself and Chief Graham, late Chief Graham, uh, talked about this many times. In a scenario, especially when we have to fill, uh, the schools, when all of our, whether it be my deputies, whether it be the officers that are out sick in the schools, obviously we have to put somebody in there. Uh, it's no different than we work details in the city limits. Uh, what we do is we go to OPD's channel, and the deputy is on the channel. And that way, if anything occurs in the city limits, and currently, and Terry, correct me if I'm wrong, um, I believe we're having to fill for Terry's officer at the moment because of medical, uh, issues in, in his own personal life. But the fact is, is that's a simple fix. You know, that's not a barrier that can't, cannot be removed. Um, and getting response to whatever the incident may be is, I am more than confident OPD would be there. I'm more than confident that our staffs will work perfectly fine together in order to get, uh, to ensure that our, our kids are safe in each and every one of the schools. Ask questions. That makes it easier for me.
Okay, all right. Board, do you have questions you'd like to bring forward?
Um, well, I think that, and this is just might be this Board Member, but if you haven't, if, if a community member's listening and haven't reviewed the, the scenarios, then the things Chief is, um, Sheriff is talking about may not track because they, they don't know what scenarios we're talking about. Because we've just basically said, take it all, or take, um, keep it as it is, but we don't, we didn't really recap the scenarios. So I don't know if it'd be appropriate for maybe Mr. McFadden or somebody to just kind of paint the picture real quick of what we're looking at.
I think Kevin, would it be possible for us to pull that up?
Madam Chair, before we go forward.
No.
Sheriff Woods, Chief Balkin, Chief Holland, thank you guys for coming out this morning. Uh, we're appreciative of you and everything that you have been doing since we've been doing this. Um, I think as, as Dr. James just said, uh, the community may not know what's going on. And, and I think the whole reason why we're here is to state that we, the contract, it's time for a contract, correct? And so we need to be very out, outward with that so that, because it, it looks like nobody knows what we're talking about right now. And so the reason we're here is to, to either renew the contract or to, uh, modify or to, to come up with some ways that we can continue to work a relationship that we have. Um, I, I'm appreciative of all three departments and, and, and I'm hoping that we can continue to do that same way. Um, some kind of way, because I think there's value in each of your agencies being in our schools. I think it, it helps the community, um, building rapport with the community, um, for OPD, for Dunellen, even though Dunellen, I'm not Dunellen, um, Bellevue is one. Um, it makes a difference, and definitely having the Sheriff's Department in our school. So, um, I think we just need to let the community know that, because it's kind of looking kind of awkward, us standing here right now, the way this conversation started.
I apologize. I did not mean to make it seem awkward. Maybe it's because the conversation's been going on for quite some time, so that was not my intention at all. Yes, we are here to review the contract. We have three options, uh, that are presented before us that we've been working on for quite some time with the involvement of the Sheriff and the Chief and Mr. McFadden. And so, um, if you take a look at the first, um, scenario, we, um, we're looking at what we currently have. Um, and I don't know, Board, do you want me to run through the basics of each scenario?
I think Mr. McFadden, Chief McFadden needs to do that.
Okay, Mr. McFadden, would you like to come?
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. McFadden. Thank you.
Maybe that's why you invited me up here. I was gonna tear things up. Yes, uh, as, as the Board stated, uh, we are currently in our three-year contract that started in twenty twenty-two, and it'll end June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Um, last contract, we did not go through this process. Uh, we went through the approval process, uh, but this year, the contract, we wanted to review it a little bit more because of the, some of the unique dynamics that came with it. So, um, again, as of the twenty-four, twenty-five contract, we have forty SROs with the Marion County Sheriff's Office, with one roamer. We had twenty-one with the Ocala Police Department, and then we had one with the Bellevue Police Department. They've all worked very well collaboratively together to keep our kids safe. And for all of the SROs throughout that contract, there was a total of roughly four point nine million dollars in SRO costs. And the breakdown there is the Sheriff was paying, we were paying the Sheriff's Office seventy-five thousand dollars per SRO of the City of Ocala, eighty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight, and then the City of Bellevue, seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Um, so at moving forward, we put together some scenarios for the twenty-five to twenty-eight contract, three-year contract, to, uh, renew the contract. We saw some significant differences in the cost of the SROs, so that's really where this conversation started with. Um, and with that, the Sheriff, uh, if we remain as current status quo, um, moving forward with the Sheriff's Office, we would need forty-one SROs and one, maybe two or three roamers because of the, again, the growing of the county. The schools are being built. And again, the Sheriff has proposed that he could stay at seventy-five thousand dollars per SRO, which brings his total to three million, seventy-five thousand dollars, around that amount. Uh, the City of Ocala, when we add the elementary school, um, for twenty-two SROs, their cost would be roughly ninety-five thousand, a little over ninety-five thousand, and which would take their total to a little over two million dollars. And the City of Bellevue, the first year, would be seventy-three thousand, roughly seventy-four thousand dollars for their one SRO. And what we done with the City of Bellevue, they, um, gave them increases each year, three percent, three percent, and a four percent to go up to a ten percent total for the three-year contract that they would, uh, participate in. Scenario two, this would be if the Sheriff took over all of the SROs. We would need roughly sixty-six of them, again, sixty-four SROs in the schools at seventy-five thousand dollars each. And two, three, the roamers can vary, you know, one or two more than what we got because again, deputies having to go to court, just, um, different things happening at the school, baker acts. We may need roamers to come in and, and help them. So that, again, the seventy-five thousand, there'll be a slight increase if we had to add one or two roamers. But the total cost for that, to excluding Ocala Police Department and the Bellevue Police Department, would bring the total to four million, nine hundred thousand dollars, roughly five million dollars. And that's for, again, scenario number two in the twenty-five, twenty-six year. And then the third scenario would be, um, again, the Sheriff having SROs in all of the unincorporated areas of the county, to include the elementary schools in the city, uh, with some roamers. And that'll bring, um, fifty-three SROs for the county, roughly right at four million dollars. The City of Ocala Police Department will have all of the secondary schools, that's middle and high schools, at ninety-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars per SRO, and that total will be about one point one million dollars. And then the City of Bellevue will have an officer as well for the same, seventy-three, nine eighty-one for one SRO. And which that total for that year, twenty-five, twenty-six, in that third scenario, will bring our total to roughly five point two million dollars. And that's, again, that's for twenty-five, twenty-six. And so from there, we just went out each year, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And, and the costs, really, they're all similar, but just goes up, same scenarios. And the only difference is, oh, uh, the City of Bellevue's cost will increase slightly because of the three percent, three percent, and the four percent increases for each year.
Thank you for that overview, Mr. McFadden. I appreciate you. Um, at this time, would the Board, would the Board have any questions for Mr. McFadden? Okay, Dr. James.
Um, Mr. McFadden, in your opinion, do you feel like there will be a, a difference in service if we were to replace the OPD officers with MCSO deputies?
I don't think there'll be a difference in service. I mean, I think they work together now real close. Um, when we look at the uniqueness and the dynamics of all of the SROs, all the schools are unique. Each SRO at these current schools now have a relationship with their current students and staff. Um, and I, and I think, again, the Sheriff and the Chief can explain their reasoning behind what they feel as though makes their officers, um, in these positions, um, again, they're all qualified. We, we strongly believe that, obviously, if anything happens in our schools, we're not gonna have a Parkland or Uvalde. And I've said that from the beginning. We're gonna have, uh, officers, deputies responding appropriately to situations. Um, being that we know that school shootings are, in the big scheme of things, rare. It's the day-to-day, uh, concerns and issues that we make sure, or they make sure that they take care of. They are taking care of the DCF calls. They're involved in breaking up fights. They're doing all of these things now, um, on a day-to-day basis. They're doing their job, so I don't see where it'll be a, a big difference in, because we don't have any issues with what they're doing now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McFadden, do we have any, um, issues with communication with two parties involved in re- in reporting? Are there any communication challenges at this time?
Not that I'm aware of. I know the county just upgraded a lot of communication, there's radio towers, and we as a district, um, use that opportunity. We're placing BDA's in both Westport Forest, I want to say Dunellen, and possibly Lake Ware. On although the radios are working, we just wanted that extra layer of protection to make sure that if they go in the back of the cafeteria behind the, uh, freezer, I don't care where they go on the campus, that the radio will work, unlike the situation that happened in Parkland where the radios weren't working. Um, we've remedied that, uh, quite a bit to where we don't have any issues now. Again, the county, working with them, they upgraded their radio systems. And as we done our test, we were at like fifty-some percent reliability, but as we went back through, now we're upwards of over ninety percent reliability to meet whatever statutory and best practice standards that we have. So as far as radio communication at our schools, it shouldn't be any, whether it's the City, County, or Bellevue officers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. McFadden. I'm, I'm looking at the three scenarios. And I, I, I appreciate the cost comparisons year to year, but isn't there another scenario that's, that's possible? And the reason I say that is because just knowing what the law is, we could, um, I'm thinking that there's another scenario, let me say it that way, and I think all the Chief and the Sheriffs know what I'm talking about. We, if you're taking, um, if you're looking at considering removing the OPD from elementary schools, there's a scenario where we can have guardians, correct?
Yes, we, we haven't really got into that. It's, it's a lot, um, a lot of work. It's a lot of conversation, a lot of co- obviously, conversations with, um, the local law enforcement agencies, the staff, the Board, the community. Uh, those are scenarios that, um, we're, we, we've not drilled down to get any type of real efficient, you know, effective data yet. Although those are scenarios, it's not something that we really, in my opinion right now, would feel comfortable discussing as a move forward.
So as a Chief, these are the three scenarios that you're comfortable with?
Yes, for, for this, um, we're talking about this contract that we're having, the twenty-five, twenty-eight contract. And I think there's language in the contract that allows other options if, if the Board so chooses to go that direction.
And the reason I ask that about that scenario is because I, by law, we gotta have somebody in every school. Um, I, I often wonder, um, how, I don't want to say this the wrong way. In the elementary school, do we have to have a, a uniformed deputy, OPD officer, um, Bellevue officer versus someone else? So that's why I asked that question. Um, I'm also looking at it from a fiscal, being fiscally responsible on how to deal with those things. Um, uh, we, we, we want every school covered, but we want to make sure we're doing it the right way. We don't want to cost ourselves out at some point, because I can see that happening in the future.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here today. I have no doubts that we will never have a Uvalde in Marion County. And I'm looking at the people right here that I am one-hundred percent certain will never allow that to happen due to the training you provide your officers, due to the commitment you have to our children and this community. And that whole situation just continues to weigh so heavy on me. And while I'm all about controlling costs, I'm not willing to do that on the backs of our children or our school employees. I want the people with, with the training and the law enforcement, ideally, that are closest to each specific community school to be the ones embedded there. I, in my mind, that's what makes sense, you know, having been a teacher for so many years. You know, kids relate to the person that's there regularly. Sure, sometimes a regular person gets sick and then a, a sub is there, so to speak, but we all know what happens sometimes. Um, it's different for you guys because you're powerful figures. But having that consistency, having that uniformed officer in every school, the opportunity that that presents to build relationships with the kids, to teach them that it's good, you know, to have a good relationship with the law. Um, there's just so many embedded lessons in that that are worth a big old pot of gold, in, in my opinion. Um, so I guess I would be just interested if we're going to be focusing on these scenarios today, what the recommendation is, um, from you, uh, Chief McFadden, on, on how to move forward for the next few years. I know that as each time this contract comes up, there's going to be new elements to consider, and, and money is always one of them. Um, and as a fiscal agent for the district, you know, I always look to our CFO, um, but, and I know you're here in the audience. Good morning Teresa. Uh, I would expect that these scenarios have been worked through, yeah, and that you're fully aware of what's being presented. So what that tells me is that whichever one we pick, at least we're gonna be able to afford it for the next few years. So i- is that an accurate statement? Okay, thank you. I see I had not. So that's, that's where I am with this.
Thank you Board Member Thrower.
Sure, thank you. Uh, so just where I sit right now, uh, while I completely understand the necessary, uh, conversation about the financial implications, and, um, Board Member Thrower just alluded to that. Other than the money changing, if it's not broke, don't fix it. So I'm comfortable with scenario one as it stands right now. Uh, understanding that the only real change we see over the next three years from what scenario one is, is that that one Bellevue Police Deputy receives, uh, a bit of a pay increase year over year for three years. And then we'll see, that's where I sit, and we'll see where we sit in three years from now. The hope is that the legislature continues to increase our safe schools allocation categorical. As well as the referendum that we have received did include school safety this time around. So the monies can be allocated out of that referendum. That would be an increase to what we have been paying for the last several years. So that's where I sit.
Thank you Board Member Campbell. Yes, Dr. James.
Regarding the finances, um, I struggle, I struggle with the idea that it costs twenty thousand more dollars for an Ocala Police Department Officer compared to a MCSO Officer. And I've had personal conversations with many people in the audience, so they're all very aware of how I feel about this. But if, and this is unfortunately for Chief Balkin, he is not in charge of his money. So he has no, and I don't want to speak for you because I'm sure you're gonna come up, but he doesn't have the discretion to decide, um, like the Sheriff does, how much that he's going to charge us. And so, um, I, I do not agree that there should be such a varying cost between the two agencies. And I believe wholeheartedly that safety in our schools is a community responsibility, not a school responsibility. If something godforsaken were to happen in our schools, they're not just going to blame the schools. Actually, what we see most is the person who's blamed first is a law enforcement agency. And these are our community students. They are not our students. They just happen to come to us for two meals and education, um, a hundred and eighty days a year. So I see this as a community cost, and I struggle greatly with paying twenty thousand dollars more per officer in the city compared to the county. And there is essentially, we have to decide what that cost value is and is keeping the same officer in the place. and is keeping the same officer in the place in those schools for the next three years worth the amount we're gonna pay. And I'm not sure I'm at a confident decision yet, but my heart tells me that I believe the city should be paying what the county is paying. So that's where I sit on cost.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
This will be my last time saying anything on this. This will be my last time probably speaking on this at all today. We have to look at costs, and I'm a proponent of safety, no matter what the cost is, because you can't put the value on a life. And if we're gonna move forward with these three scenarios, just so Chief Balkin and Chief Holland and Sheriff Woods know, I believe that Scenario One is the better scenario. I'm agree with Dr. Campbell that if it's working, let's keep it working. I'm sure we can afford this, it's going to, again, there is a significant increase, as Dr. James says, for OPD's officers. However, I understand there's a different dynamic as far as retirements and benefits and different things as far as what the city has. And he doesn't have the leeway that Sheriff Woods has from the county. So if we're going to do this for me, and I'm through with it, Scenario One would be the way that we're gonna go.
Thank you, Board. Mr. McFadden, do you have anything you want to add?
No, ma'am, I think, um, I think there's an opportunity to have some further conversation with Chief Balkin and his staff about the cause, and maybe some conversation with, obviously, like you said, it's not him doing that in his department. It's more of the, you know, he don't have that flexibility. So I wouldn't make a recommendation today, but maybe after a conversation with them after a day or two, that I could give a recommendation. But there's some areas in the contract that I feel as though we can kind of work on as far as the overtime budget that they got in there, which is roughly, our share of it is over three thousand dollars per SRO. And from my understanding, we're not receiving that overtime service because we're still paying sixty-five dollars for special detail, for football games, basketball games, sporting events, graduations. And I don't know if we're really benefiting and receiving the overtime service that's embedded in the contract. So that's further conversations that we have to have with the city of Ocala to see how that works out, and maybe that cost could come down just, you know, a little bit. I'm not saying a whole lot, but we understand the chief's position. But that's something that we can discuss further, is the overtime that's embedded in the contract.
Mr. McFadden, when will you have those discussions?
Immediately after this year, I can call the chief, or Major Scroll, and I've been working with her real closely. And again, it's not the chief's decision, he has to get that.
Go back to the council.
Go back to the council to get approval, to make any adjustments to the contract.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Thrower?
Thank you, I'm on the same playing field as Board Member James on this one. I do understand the dynamic, and I'm glad you mentioned, Board Member Cummings, about who the decision-makers are, you know, when it comes to each person's budget. And I'm of the exact same mind that, you know, these are the community's children, you know. We know if they're from school, what are they doing in the community, you know? We all share the responsibility and bear the burden. So anything that, and I'm sure the city council's listening right now, but anything that the city council is willing to review and through you bring back to the board, I would be very grateful to entertain.
Thank you, Board. Sheriff, do you want to now come back that we've had some discussion? And then Chief, I'll have you up next, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. Pardon me, frog in the fruit. First of all, again, I want to apologize. Now that I got a clearer picture of what y'all are looking for, let me, um, let me start off like this, because I know I have not had a conversation with everybody in the room. I've had conversations with a handful of y'all. So let's start with this, let's take the money out of it. Take the money out of this scenario, okay? Now let's take the school district or this scenario out of it, being specifically towards the schools and SROs. In any dynamics, regardless of what it may be, the perfect scenario is one entity that oversees something, not multiple. Okay? It's as simple as that. Now, does that mean anything else doesn't work? No, does not mean that. That's your best case scenario. Here, that's one of the scenarios in which we're talking about. One entity overseeing the entire thing. That's the best case scenario. Second best, which is not really necessarily any less than the first, is when you have more than one agency working together. Now unlike in Broward County, there was way too many agencies in that scenario, which resulted in that tragedy. Now here, for us, I'm here to assure you and anyone else that is listening today that I have more than full confidence in Terry Holland and Mike Balkin of ensuring that keeping the safety of the kids has a priority. I have no concern of it whatsoever. And our relationship, regardless if I ever get pissed off at Mike Balkin, that scenario will never, this is rarely do I make promises. And this is one where I will. I will never allow our disconnect to affect the safety of the kids in this county, never. That is a promise I will give you standing here before you today. Now when we begin to get outside of those two, that's when you begin to muddy the water, and it begins to lessen. And I'll talk about Board Member Cummings' scenario. That is not the best scenario. It might be the cheapest, but it's not the best. Fact is, is the guardian program, and some people have got a misunderstanding of what the guardian program is. Okay? The guardian program is your employees being trained by sheriff in order to be allowed to carry a gun onto a school grounds. Also in that program is hiring a security company, and I have to train them. I know it, tell it before y'all, I don't have a choice like I did in the beginning. Each of us sheriffs are required to train them because it's in statute. You get what you pay for. I'll be polite, and I will not demean them in any shape or form, but there is no security company on this planet that will rise to the level of law enforcement and their dedication and service to their communities, none. That scenario has not been tested. That scenario has not been challenged when somebody walks on the campus. I don't know about y'all, I do not want to be the guinea pig in that scenario, whether it works or not. What sums up here, well, let me, before I get to this point, and it hasn't been just in this scenario. It has been, I'm dealing with Dunellen right now as well, and I hear from people, the services. I worked at Ocalapedia. There's dedicated individuals at Ocalapedia. I've been sheriff for, going on nine years now. Dedicated employees in my office. But what I find unfair is those that have never had my deputies service them say I will not get the same level of service. That's a little unfair, I find it offensive, because the fact is, is you don't know until they're in there. Now you have a uniqueness in this scenario, because you get both sides. Now I will say this, and I'm pretty sure these two will say the same thing. If there's ever been a non-service or a problem, and you haven't told one of my staff, why not? And then if you did tell my staff and nothing was resolved with my deputies, why didn't you make a phone call to me to address the issue? Because in order for any one of us three to solve a problem, I gotta know about it. I don't make assumptions that everybody out here is doing wrong. So in essence, what does it boil down to? What I ask you to take out. And you're right, you spend every dime that you have to protect kids. Now, does that dime that you're spending and the service in which you're receiving change that scenario? Your service ain't gonna change, that I can promise you. Now if you're gonna ask me personally, which no one truly has asked the question, because I can tell you what Michael say, I can tell you what Terry says, because they have value, there's value in it. There's value of them having ownership into their officers being in the schools, there's absolute value there. There is, I can't deny it, and I won't deny it. Does that mean that my deputies work less than them? No. Does that mean they work better than them? No. But there's value for each of them. So coming back to what I asked you to take out, that's what this scenario is. Is what you want to spend, and you get the same. Law enforcement is law enforcement, don't get me wrong. We've got our DAs. And I saw the eyebrows when I used a little language there a minute ago, so I held back on that one. But the fact is, is the service is going to be there no matter what. And if you truly, in what you do, you're dedicated to the education of these kids. You should be, that's your passion, that's where you should be directed. Your passion also should be protection of the kids, and it is there. I see it in each of you. I talk to y'all, I know it's there. And just so that's on the table, the difference between myself and Chief Balkin and Chief Holland, I answer to the citizens of Marion County, I don't answer to a five-board members. A sheriff, let me rephrase that, not me, a sheriff. I'm just Billy Woods, I'm just some dummy that happened to get lucky and got into position. But the truth is, is the sheriff's ability, flexibility is what makes the sheriff unique, and it allows me. And I will agree with Board Member James, is what I do believe, I do think that there needs to be a fair share cost, okay? Really does. Truth is, the taxpayers pay for the schools, taxpayers pay for the services in the county. And you need to pull some solemn wisdom, split the baby. So not one side is having to fork out all the money, more than the other side is. Both need to share. And that's pretty much what I have done in this contract. I've split my cost as best as I can for then and looking to the future. Now will that change? The odds are pretty good, but not while I'm sitting in this seat, because as we know, what I was paid in the beginning when I was hired ain't the same thing what the officers are being paid now. So that changes over time, and it will change. Everybody needs to come to that realization, it will change eventually. Not for me, because I said good, and I have that ability to make that determination. Are we good when we sit the way we are now? Yeah, we're fine. We communicate, we talk to each other. Y'all already know we have breakfasts, we vented out, some of y'all have been there. So the truth is, the decision is yours at this point. Now he can go negotiate, you can ask him for this and that. Bottom dollar is what you want to spend for the exact same service. I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Sheriff, we appreciate you being here with us this morning. Chief Balkin?
For the record, Mike Balkin, Ocala Police Chief, and good morning. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak with you all this morning. Let me start out by saying, I certainly, certainly understand the financial concerns regarding these SRO contracts. I'm not gonna bore you, I think you all are smart enough to know how my budget process differs from the sheriff and how it involves city council. I'm not gonna waste your time with that. I am gonna stand here today and tell you that I absolutely do believe that all of our city schools should be staffed only by city cops. I say that for different reasons, I agree with the sheriff on just about everything he says, but, you know, I think the most important reason, obviously, that we have school resources on our campus is to deal with an armed assailant in 2025, right? I think we can all agree with that. That is their most important function. But our city of Ocala police officers serve as school resource officers. This is not to take away from the sheriff's office, I have a tremendous amount of faith in my brothers and sisters in Green. But I have a vested interest in keeping our cops in our city schools. They're in there building those positive relationships that you talked about, sir, with our kids. They're developing and implementing crime prevention strategies, they're providing mentorship on a daily basis. And forgive me, I'm getting over a cold. They're working every day with our patrol officers and our detectives, sharing information back and forth on potential offenders, on known criminal activity, on potential opportunities to prevent crime from ever even occurring on your campuses. That's the, that's the gold star here, right? That's the, that's the blue ribbon, that's what we're trying to do. And there's also daily opportunities for them to share intelligence across, not only my agency, but with the sheriff's office, Dunellen, Bellevue as well. You know, stepping back, many of you know me, certainly professionally, some of you personally, you know what I stand for, you know how I run our organization in the city of Ocala. You know what our agency does within the community, especially within our communities of need, and especially when it comes to our youth, you see us out there. I believe, you guys have to know that I only want what's best for our kids here in not only Ocala, but greater Marion County. I believe that what's best for the kids of Ocala is to have an SRO that has a truly vested interest in not only what occurs on school grounds during school hours, but what also occurs in the surrounding neighborhoods. I believe they should have a vested interest in not just the kid, but the family and the neighborhood nearby. And we do a good job, I think, of looking after that and ensuring the overall welfare of the entire school and thereby the entire community. And I'm, this isn't a knock on anybody, I'll say it like this. I think if you took one of my city officers and put them in Fort McCoy, I don't think I'm gonna get the same return on investment as it relates to that surrounding, that holistic approach to what at least I'm trying to accomplish in the city. I'll say that. As it relates to the, you know, to those that are out there watching right now, the average taxpayer, when we talk about the finances, I do think it's important to note that those tax dollars are already spent, have already been secured from our taxpayers. This is all about which pot of money this is coming from to pay for these officers or these deputies, right? Are you gonna pay it, is the city gonna pay it, or is the sheriff gonna pay it? That's really what it comes down, whose bucket is this coming out of? I certainly understand that this is a big increase for us, and it comes at an inopportune time for me. We're dealing with an upcoming union contract that we're currently about to go into negotiations with. We're trying to hit a moving target. I can assure you that what we absorb currently as it relates to the numbers that you all don't see, right? You don't see what we're absorbing in the cost of just the supervision that's needed for these school resource officers that we currently have. That's two sergeants and a lieutenant, that's way, way north of three hundred thousand dollars alone. The city also absorbs the cost of SROs on campus during summer school, which is not included in what you're charged. We don't charge you for that rover position that we need when my officer calls out sick and I have to pay somebody overtime, and certainly, Mr. McFadden and I can have that conversation. But these are, these are real numbers that I, I only have so much wiggle room with, and I wish I wasn't the squeaky wheel in the room. I have no doubt, here's what I can tell you for sure, I will agree with the sheriff, regardless of what your decision is, we're gonna make this work. These kids in this county are gonna be safe. If it's a deputy in my school, the sheriff's right, they're gonna be on my radio channel, and when they key up and ask for help, every cop in blue in the city of Ocala, and include the chief, is going to that school, and they're going after. Every cop in blue in the city of Ocala, to include the chief, is going to that school and they're going after the active assailant. And I have no doubt, and he has no doubt, we did it at Forest High School, and we're gonna do it in Bellevue, and we're gonna do it wherever the need takes us, so. First and foremost is the safety and security of our kids, regardless of what you all decide, I just, I do believe there's more to this. Than dollars, and I believe there's more to this role of an SRO than standing there waiting on, waiting on an active assailant to walk on campus, there's much more, certainly for me. Dr. James, to your point, I, I certainly get it, I don't, I don't think you get the same level of service, and I don't mean that to talk against the sheriff, I just think, again, if you take my, my cop and put him in Fort McCoy. And they don't have a vested interest in ensuring that the chief of police is happy with their service, not just on the school campus. Right? Not just during school hours, but holistically, I think it's a little bit different, I want that control. I wanna maintain that control over what happens in the schools in the city. All the faith in the world in the sheriff's office, all the faith in the world in his deputies that they're gonna do the right thing. I, I, the communication as it relates to a response for an active assailant, hands down, we're gonna get that right every time. Do I think that we're gonna share criminal information, intelligence information, crime prevention strategy information back and forth between his deputy and my zone officers that are running the road? There's no way in hell that's gonna happen, I apologize for that, but that's just not, it just doesn't work like that. But rest assured, the sheriff and I, Chief Holland, are committed to making this work with Mr. McFadden, regardless of what you decide, we're gonna make this work, our kids are gonna remain safe whether we stay in those schools or not. And I'm certainly happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you Chief, Board, do you have any questions for Chief Balkan?
Chief Balkan, you, I do. You did say that there's, I appreciate you coming in and adding to what we were talking about, because I see that value of your officers being in school for the same reason that you say for mentorship, for for building rapport, for community support, recently I was at a school, city school for DARE. Those programs, that's a lot of stuff that we don't talk about, that happens through with our SROs and our, our law enforcement assets in the school, so. I see that value, so that's why I say what I'm saying. And Sheriff Woods, I didn't ask for that scenario to be a to be obstinate, I asked for that scenario because I just wanted everything on the table, because it's gonna come from the community, that that is an option. So not, that would not, that would not have been my option at this point, but I want everybody, if we're gonna have a community conversation, let's have a good community conversation. And just put it out there. But I thank y'all for coming out this morning, and I, again, I've said where I'm at, I think, I think the community knows where we are with this. And what we do there is, you can't put, again, you can't put a price tag on, on a life. You can't, and definitely not a kid's life, and I, I think that all, all three agencies are gonna do a tremendous job, cause you already have done a tremendous job. I remember the incident last year in Marion Oaks. It wasn't just sheriff's department that showed up, it was everybody that showed up, and that's what it's supposed to be, everybody show up. When, when, when the lights go off, everybody's supposed to be there, and so I appreciate you guys for that, and I don't think we gotta keep talking about all this stuff, cause I think we done been spent about an hour on it, I think we need to keep moving, and I think everybody knows where we are.
Thank you, yes, Board Member Campbell?
Sure, I'll, I'll just, it's not a question Chief, you're, you're welcome to have a seat. Just again, I, I reiterate the point that was being made about scenario one. The District One seat in the house that I live in is in the city of Ocala, and I probably am the only board member that can say that. I understand the services that occur within the city that are different, and we pay for those as city residents. But I also understand the uniqueness of living within the city of Ocala proper, and the density and the population within the city limits. That are unique to other parts of the county, certainly we have density in other areas. Silver Spring Shores, Marion Oaks, there, there's other population centers within the community. But the uniqueness of the city of Ocala, I see value in having those officers in those schools with those students who also live within the city limits. Another comment was made about potentially the best scenario being all operating under one roof per se. I think that's an argument to be made in multiple different scenarios, and so it's tough to say that one is better over what we're doing right now. Right now, there are two fire rescues, there are multiple law enforcement offices, there are two 911 call centers. There's a reason for separation that others within jurisdictions have seen the reason for separation, and if those are gonna continue to stay separate. Then I also agree that Marion County Public Schools needs to consider this as scenario one, where we keep some of these responsibilities separate. And at least for the next three years, continue to keep it the way it is. If there seems to be at least three board members up here that agree with scenario two. I am not one of them, but if there are at least three, we still have a board member we haven't heard from. If there are at least three that would say scenario two is the best option. My only request, if that seemed to be the direction we would go. Is that that $75,000 from the sheriff's office be a locked in number for at least five to 10 years. We've seen that $75,000 number for at least two contract cycles. And so that increase isn't seen in at least the last three years, and so we're potentially locking it in for another three. If we were to go in that direction, I would request that the salary of $75,000 be locked in for an extended period beyond just this three-year contract. And then that could be a conversation to be had, I still believe scenario one is the best option for our schools.
Board Member Campbell, anybody else?
I just wanna add, I appreciate Chief Balkan sharing his thoughts, and I, my students attend, my students, my children attend a city school right in the heart of the city, and so you know, their officer, Officer Maraz, she's retiring this year, but she's been there for a very long time. And candidly, the conversations we've had are that she makes a lot more even than the $95,397. And so, understanding absolutely there are added costs, and I maintain that I think that we should share those all together, this community should share those. And so regardless of how this board proceeds, whether scenario one or scenario two, I am fine with either, I don't think scenario three is necessary, I think we need to do one or two, whatever that looks like. But my request would be, one, if we make a decision today, I want this board to agree, this would be my hope. That the chair, if there's any level of negotiation that occurs after this on the number, as long as it goes down and not up. That we are giving the chair the discretion to make that decision and then see this on a board agenda, because with either scenario, these gentlemen and ladies have some work to do, and I wanna ensure that we're setting them up for success, and then I had another thought and it just lost me. Oh. My, my second request would be, in two years from now, I wanna start this conversation. It is putting, if we go with scenario two. It is a very short timeframe to see a change, and if as Reverend Cummings discussed, an option that wasn't presented today is going to be an option on the table in three years from now. That is still a heavy lift for this district to step into, and so having this conversation in April ahead of the start of school in August is too short of a timeframe. And so if that is the case, if we are gonna go in any different direction, I wanna see this conversation start 12 months out. So that all agencies, the school board, we're all have more than ample time to discuss this and get to, get to go. So that everyone has the time they deserve, so those are my two requests, either way, thank you.
Thanks, yes, the, the sooner it comes to the whole board's attention, I know that there's always conversations that occur behind the scenes, but we don't know what anyone else is saying because of sunshine laws, and, and this is such a linchpin for our community. That the, the sooner that we can have some numbers and begin the conversation is, is always better. You know, I just wrote down, you know, a couple notes as, as Chief Balkan was, was speaking, and you know, when a school shooting happens, the whole community suffers. It really at that point doesn't even matter, it, it's secondary to who was in charge, the whole community is, is suffering. And in my mind, prevention is, is much better than crisis intervention and a lot less expensive. And I will continue to share that ownership of, of school safety is everyone's responsibility, but, but the agencies that are the closest to the community's schools. To me, just in a fundamental way, that's what makes the most sense, so. I, I think it's important if we could to try to get to consensus today. I, I don't know if, I see you nodding, so hopefully you agree. And I'm seeing appetite for, for one and two, so I would say between those two, I would go with one. For this cycle. I heard, yeah.
Chief Balkan and Sheriff Woods, I just wanna say thank you, we have kept you here an hour this morning, which was, was not my intention, I'm we got off to a little bit of a bumpy start, again, I apologize for that, but I am truly grateful that you all are here this morning to have this conversation with us, and I'm just gonna reminisce for a second, because this contract, even though it is a community issue and, and it's close to our heart, to me it is personal. When I was at NH Jones, we, we had a lockdown there with, that was called in as an active shooter, which thank goodness it wasn't. I have never been prouder or felt more secure from the reaction that came from our community and our law enforcement officers. I believe we had law enforcement on campus in a minute and 20 seconds, Chief, you'll have to check that time for me, but it was, it was super fast, and I was a teacher on the very outside classroom of the school campus, right against the road, and so you know, it's, it's frightening, even when, even when something terrible doesn't happen. And it's, it's challenging, especially when you're working with young children, and so I just wanna thank you both for the work that you do every single day. Not just the major emerg, and, and Mr. Joyner out there, I see you, and he answers my calls, and so I, I'm just grateful for all of you, and thank you for being part of this conversation and sharing the ins and outs of what you have to do each day. And Board, I do think it's important for the timeline that we do come to consensus, I was trying to take notes at you all were, were talking. Dr. Campbell, I, I've got you for scenario one, we're using all agencies, Reverend Cummings, all agencies? Board Member Thrower, all agencies, and I am in favor of using all agencies, so, and Dr. Campbell, Dr. James, you ended up either one or two.
Yeah, I'll support, I'll support the direction of the board.
Okay.
I just wanna see us be very proactive on a timeline in two years from now.
Okay, thank you Dr. James. So Mr. McFadden, I think you've got enough information to move forward, the board does agree that this scenario number one is what we would like to do moving forward, using all three departments to cover the safety and security of our schools. Okay, thank you.
Thank you gentlemen, thank you. And ladies.
Is there any public comment? Okay. Seeing none. We'll move on to our next agenda item, MTC radiography program, and update, Mr. Smallridge is here. Dr. Brewer, I saw him tap you on the, are you coming down too? Okay. Thank you.
Thought I was next, I may have thought I was after somebody else, so I apologize, I wasn't quite ready. I'm also getting over being a little bit sick, so excuse my voice. Good morning, Board Chair Conrad, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Gullit. I'm here today to talk about a notice of intent that we turned in with the state. But rather than just talking about the notice of intent, I really need to explain the program that we have that's very unique in the state of Florida. Talk about the history of it a little bit, and then talk about the danger and trouble that it's kinda in, and then come back around to the notice of intent. I don't know if you guys realize, but our radiologic technology program at MTC is the only one that exists at a technical college in the state of Florida. And it goes back into the seventies, I don't know the exact year that it started, but I believe it was somewhere around 78. And I do know that my sister-in-law took the program in 84, so I can verify that it goes way back. And the program itself right now is a career certificate program. And the history of this program is, obviously goes way back, but sometime around 2006, the, the certification agency, the one that does the cert test, we started talking about requiring these students to have a two-year degree or higher to sit for the state licensing, so that's kinda, kinda set the stage for the story. But I do wanna go through what a certificate program is compared to what an AS degree in radiography program is. So the program that we have is a two-year, 2,700 clock hour program. And it is accredited by the Joint Review Committee on Education and Radiologic Technology. And the program was just reviewed, our program was, and we're on an eight-year award, and we're up for review again in, in '32, so we're in really good standing. The program is one of the best, most successful programs in our district, there are two other colleges that offer this program. Our credentialing exam pass rate for 2019 through 2023 is 94.8%. That's outstanding. We just got back 24's data, I didn't, not add it into it, didn't feel like going back and changing it, but I will share it with you. The 2024 pass rate for our group, our cohort, was 100% in all three categories, so would actually bring up the percent just a little bit. And our job placement rate has pretty much always been 100%, because the community really needs these, these employees, they need more to be kicked out by our colleges in the local area. Which is gonna be part of this presentation. The, the placement rate is exactly what it sounds like, how many of our students get jobs, and then the completion rate is how many of them that go past that ad drop date actually complete the program. And so we're doing a good job of choosing the right students, they're finishing our program and they're passing the state licensing test. Now, I mentioned 2006 because students, back then, the ARRT is the, the agency that gives the Florida credentialing exam. They decided in 2006 that they were going to require that two-year degree or higher to sit for the, for the state licensing. Well, that's gonna be an issue for a, a institution like CTAE, it was called back then. So the college, or the, the Career Center, it was an MTC back then, partnered with the local college, and, and the Career Center gave all the professional courses, and then the other, the college did all of the prereqs and the and the general education classes, they did all that work. So 2006 is a key, is a key year, cause that's when they started talking about requiring the students to have that but they didn't actually enforce it until 2015, which I did a lot of research on it, and it was like, wow, did they really talk about it that far out? And then they decided to make the students have it, they, they started enforcing it in 2015 is what I found. So from 2006 through 2015, MTC students, CTAE back then, took the professional coursework at now MTC. And the general education and prereq coursework was with the local state college. And then the local state college awarded the associate degree, that's how the partnership worked. That's how all of the students came out with the professional work and the college classes to get the AS degree. Now, that changed, that, that happened up till 2015. Now, what happened in 2015 is that the local state college, they decided, they went their own way, they were starting their own program. And there was some issues with accreditation with their SACS, there, there was some issues there, and they, they dropped the partnership with CTAE back in the day. And so the only choice of action that now MTC had to do was, we could only recruit students that had a two-year degree or higher to, to keep our program open. And I, I believe everybody thought the program would not continue and that it would close. Because you could not recruit as easily as a state college that was gonna offer the AS degree. So the only way around the state requirement for licensing was to just recruit students with a two-year degree or higher. So I call it, we're behind the eight ball, so we're not on level playing field when it comes to recruiting. So the AS degree in radi, in radiography is what the local state college and most of our state colleges offer. We can't offer that because we have a certificate program, which is why we We can't offer that, because we have a certificate program, which is why we, the state aboard program, approved program for a technical college is radiologic technology, it's a certificate only. The key issue is that the licensing is the same. The jobs that our students and the local state colleges, the, the students that they produce, they get the same jobs and they're making the same money. So, there's not really a difference, other than we have to take in students that already have a two-year degree. So, our legislature and our governor approved the process of tech colleges starting AS degree or AA degrees, so it made a lot of sense for us to go after this opportunity. So, the doors opened, we wanted to go for it, and because it makes perfect sense, we're kind of a unique situation, because we're the only tech college in Florida that offers this program, we're grandfathered in, the actual frameworks that's listed on the DOE is only for Marion Technical College to offer the radiologic technology certificate program. So, while that window's open, and it's law that we can pursue and actually give out an AS degree, we, we wanted to go for it. So, that's what I want to describe now, is if we switch over to the associate in science and radiography, I want to describe what that program would be and how we would deliver it. It would be still a two-year program, it would be 77 college hours, 58 of those hours would be the professional coursework that we already give. And then we would be offering 19 general education and prerequisite hours to get us to the 77 that we would be able to issue an associate of science and, and radiography. Marion Technical College would offer the gen ed and prerequisites online, and then we would be the one awarding the degree. So, that would be the difference in the program. And then, the, the most important point for me is that it would be that, for the first time since 2015, students without a degree could be recruited to our program at Marion Technical College. It would put us on a level playing field. And that cohort that, from 2024, that I said I didn't include in the, in the presentation, that cohort stands out and is a very key point. There was only seven students that went into the cohort the very first year I was at Marion Technical College, and they, now we got, you know, two years later they graduated, and then we got their pass rate and so forth, and their job rate, placement rate, and it was 100%. I want you to think about seven. Seven students is not enough students. We need to be taking in 16 to 20 students every year to have a balanced budget. 15 barely pays the bills, 16, you're starting to make not a profit, but we could actually do some things to buy, you know, enhanced, new equipment and stuff for the program. But 20 is a comfortable number, because you're going to have some attrition, and if you can, if you can recruit 20, and you have a couple drop out or fail out, you can still be in really good standing. So, my first year, I was like, wow, seven? We might actually have to close this program. And hired some, hired a new staff member, made it very clear to them that we have to recruit better, and the next two cohorts were 16 and above. And the good news about next year is we already have 16, that it looks like we're going to have at least 16 for the next cohort. So, we're in good standing. But the thing I wanted to explain to you guys was the history behind this program. We're the only one in the state of Florida that has the program as it is. We can't recruit the way that we should be able to recruit, because of the unique situation. And now we have the opportunity to go after an AS degree. And by the way, that would make Marion County Public Schools, if, if successful in this approach, that the only, the first district in the actual state that would give out an AS degree. We're, we're the, we're the only one right now that's even turned in a notice of intent to the state. So, I wanted to give that history. I will tell you that the local state college has the same program, so there, there is a little bit of an issue of, I've heard people say, well, we're not supposed to compete against them, and, you know, we shouldn't start a program that they have. We had it first, and I want you to really understand that, because you're going to hear that. We had it first, the, the local state college made a decision to start their own program, we didn't go away, we hung in there, we fought, and we kept our program going, and now we have an opportunity to offer the same program. Okay? Now, the, the process and flow of getting from where we are now to an AS degree is now on the screen that you're seeing. So, the Career Center, which is us, MTC, submits a notice of intent at least 100 days before submitting the proposal to the Division of Career and Adult Education. And I put timeline starts January 7th, because that is when we officially turned in our current notice of intent to this department, so the, the clock started on January 7th, we've already done that. Then, the DCAE has 10 business days to forward that notice of intent to the Florida College System. And then the Florida Colleges System announces the notice of intent back to the Florida College System institutions. Mostly our state colleges are going to get that notice, and they're going to be told, here's the notice of intent, and then they're put on notice that they now can turn around and submit objections or alternate proposals to the DCAE within 60 days. So, that's kind of where we're at, we're on that end of that 60-day period. They, I, I'm sure that the state colleges will say they object, and, and I, through some of the communication, they'll probably say that there's not enough jobs in our area to take the placements of all these students, but what I don't understand, and I've already kind of explained it, is we're not trying to create another cohort, we're not trying to create a larger cohort, we're not trying to create a new program. We existed first in our community, we're just trying to fill our cohort each year, we're not trying to expand it. And we have 16 next year without this, without this possibility of having the AS degree. We originally tried to get this going early enough that we could even offer the AS degree in August, but we've kind of been delayed a little bit, so, and I'm fine with that. I just want it to happen, don't care if it happens in August, or if it happens the following August, as long as we can get the school to that, to that stage, then we'll be on a level playing field. So, the Career Center, then, if we survive past the 60 days and, and, and the, the Florida College System puts its objections, if they object to it, and I think they will, the process after that is I have to respond to the objections and show why it's not correct. And I'm, I'm assuming that they're going to say there's not enough jobs, because Career Source numbers in our local area, Marion Citrus Levy, does not show enough, maybe shows 27, 28 openings per year, and then you start adding up the three institutions, theoretically, the numbers with Career Source looks like there might not be enough placements in our area. Not true, Career Source numbers aren't even close to being accurate. I've got letters from all the hiring agencies, all the big hospitals, imaging centers, that gave us support letters that we sent with our notice of intent to the state, to show that they're begging for more students. Our local state college, the private institution that's in town, the college, plus us, we're not supplying them enough of the students that they need to hire into these positions, because they don't just hire them into radiologic technology positions, they're hiring them into similar positions and training them on the job as well, they're, they're really seeking our graduates. So, I already know how I'm going to defend that objection, but it, I haven't received the objection yet. If we get through all that, then we send our proposal, which describes each of our class hour, for our 77 actual college hours. We describe all of our general ed requirements, our, our prerequisites, and how we're going to deliver that each term, and we have that pretty much finished, and we're ready to turn that in if we get to that stage. So, then we would then send them our proposal, and then they submit, then the DCAE submits written analysis to the commissioner, and the commissioner, within 45 days, recommends approval or disapproval to the state, Board of Education, and then we're notified by the State Board of Education what the decision is. One of the key things that I want you to understand is that we would not remove our certificate path for our students that come in and apply with us, it would still be an option. So, students could come in and say, well, I already have a degree, I don't need to go for an AS, I just want to go through your professional courses and just have a certificate, sit for the state test. We can still have that path open, and then, then the, the great option is that we could recruit students right out of high school, or someone that's never gone to college and even taken a gen ed requirement, we could recruit on a level playing field, and we would fill our cohort and have a waiting list for ad drop. Ideally, you take 20 students in, you have two or three on a waitlist, for if someone drops during ad drop, we slide them right in, and we run, we run on. But we don't have that luxury right now, because we have to recruit students that already have a degree. So, that's where we're at, very excited about it. It's been a long process, and, and, and a lot of other tech colleges are kind of waiting to see what happens here, but they, there's other colleges about to turn their notice of intent, so I'm hoping that they will, that they will get theirs turned in, and, and we could also team together as a, a network of tech colleges, and we could, like, I could offer a couple of the gen ed requirements online, maybe another tech colleges, a little bit away, could take a couple of those gen ed, and we could work together on supplying those, those teachers and working together to offer those gen ed. We did have, we did have a, part of the process that slowed us down a little bit was our first notice of intent, we had a partnership with a, another state college that was excited about working with us, they were going to offer the gen ed and the prereqs online, and then our students, as they graduated, could go into a bachelor program with them, but they, they dropped us, there was a lot of pressure, there's some pressure out there from the state colleges not to help us. And, and, and that's, that's a little bit natural, I don't want you to think they're all being just mean, but if you think back, when I was coming out of high school, we had community colleges, we didn't have a state college in our area, Lake County, you didn't have a state college, you had a community college. And if, if you think of the progression of how we've grown in education, the community colleges started offering, hey, let's offer some bachelor degrees, and let's step up from just AA and AS degrees, and I call it, they grew up to the state college level, right? Well, who did they receive opposition from? The universities. The universities didn't want them doing that, don't step on our, our territory, right? So, the universities were the big guy, the community college was, were the, the small guy, and they fought it, and they fought it, but the state, the, the, the community colleges stepped up to state college level, and they're doing a great job for us, offering bachelor degrees and higher-level education, and they didn't put the, the universities out of business. And the tech colleges are not going to put the state colleges out of business, but they're a little nervous about it, so there's some pushback, and there's going to be some opposition, but I'll roll my sleeves up and fight a long fight, so I'm, I'm ready to go. Any questions?
Any questions from the Board?
Yes. I just have a comment, I know that I was one of the Board Members that requested you to come before us and give this update, and I am grateful that you did, because it paints a beautiful picture. And just before you, the Sheriff was talking about, you know, do we, do we want to be the guinea pig for Guardians?
Yes, we do.
And for Guardians, maybe we don't, but for this, we do, we want to be the first, 110%, I want to be able to say that Marion County is the first county in the state with a technical college offering gen eds and an AA program. And so, I am excited about this, I believe that this is what's best for our students. I personally have someone in my life who works with my family, she was a graduate from North Marion, and she is now at CF, and she is on a track for radiology, I don't know, one of theologies, and she would be a perfect candidate for MTC. CF is, is not exactly doing exactly what I think she hoped it was, and she's having a bit of a hard time, and a smaller environment would be better for her. And this, I just see her as a perfect candidate, but right now, she can't participate in your program, because she doesn't have an AA degree yet, or an AS degree. And so, I see this as an excellent next step for this community, and I'm very excited about it.
I'm excited as well, and I do agree with you, Guardians should not ever be the primary source of security on a campus. Throw that in there, since you brought it up.
Reverend Cummings?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Smallridge, thank you for the presentation. Slide number five is missing. One thing that I would love for you to have included, that would have been the average starting salary for someone that completes your program. I think that, that's, that's a, I, I kind of know what it is, I think that's a good selling point, when, when you're talking about this, your program.
If I did that, we wouldn't be able to recruit teachers, they would all come.
I'd probably be taking the class too.
On a funny side note, yes, I should have put that in there. You'd be surprised what our practical nurses are making, coming out after one year, and our, our technicians coming out of this program, or they're making more than, more than the starting teachers, so. I got a little pushback from some counselors when we first started doing dual enrollment, and I had to really make it clear that, guys, listen, that we're not all about, we're not about taking the lowest students in the district, we're there for every, every type of student in our district, but we have some really, really high-performing students applying to get into our programs, and they're making more money in a very short period of time than a lot of four-year college graduates, so when I go on the recruiting trail, I do put those numbers in there. And I do have presentations with it, I just didn't think about it for this one.
Thanks.
We're going down the line, and, and I have 1,000 complete confidence that we have the, the right man standing in front of us to fight this fight and to advocate. So, thank you, Mr. Smallridge, for this presentation. You know, in the end, for me, it's always about what's best for kids, families, and the community, and accessible career and technical education at the local level at an affordable price, you just can't go wrong. So, I'm really grateful for this, thank you for coming up and presenting it today, and let's go.
Okay.
If you need a letter, I'm happy to write it.
I might need that.
Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. Actually, I would have been a, a better piggyback off of what Reverend Cummings was saying, because this year during the Bellevue High School capstone projects, they put me in a medical room again, where I had seven or eight or nine presentations, and one of the students at Bellevue shadowed one of your students, and in the radiology program, a radiologic technology certificate program, what have you. And so, I heard all about the starting salaries of these individuals, and so, you actually could just pull information right out of her capstone project to, to help you with your recruitment. But I did ask her, are you going to go to MTC? She's actually going to have to go to a community college outside of the state right now, is what her intention is, but that was my question right out of the gate, because I knew that this was something we potentially were pursuing, and just didn't have the exact timeline until today. I do have a question, though, because you did highlight that the prerequisites would all be done online. Do we already have educators identified that will be Marion County public school teachers, either through Marion Virtual School or something, that have the master's degree and the certification to be able to teach those prerequisites? Will they be right here in Marion County? And our, I was trying to pull up our teacher job description, and instructional, and all of those things, our teacher job description, by the way, hasn't been updated since 2015, so I mean, I'm just based on the information I just saw, unless there's something else out there, and we're always updating job descriptions, that, that's one that hasn't been touched in 10 years, so we might want to revisit that, if Ms. Moran is listening right now. But regardless, I, I was curious about how we intend to do the prerequisites, should we get through that process, I'm certain we kind of want to make sure we have all the i's dotted and t's crossed, that we actually have approval to do this before we start hiring people, I mean, that would obviously make sense.
I don't really need approval, I can do part-time contracts.
Okay. So, but are they, were, the intention is they'll be Marion County Public Schools employees, just like all the rest of your educators?
That would be the intention, and I've already contacted some staff members that I know their credentials, that used to work for me, and I've started lining that up, but I didn't get too far ahead of myself, because I want to get past some of the steps here. But the, you know, one of the mistakes I made in the beginning, when I started this process, was that I assumed that you had to have a master's to teach the college-level prerequisite courses, but, and Dr. Gullett was a big part of this process with me, and, what I learned quickly was it's very political, and there's, and I'm not a very political person, so I can be like Sheriff Billy Woods and say things quicker than I should sometimes, so Dr. Gullett kind of kept me, you know, hey, you know, not that way. So, I, I thought it was that you had to have a master's degree, and I thought that you had to be certified in that area, and in the process and some of the obstacles, we have some people helping us from the state, outside of the DOE, in the senate level especially. And I got a call, and she said, Gary, you don't need to do it, you don't need a partner to do the gen ed, all you need are teachers with a bachelor's level and 15 hours of college-level work with a C or higher in that area. Well, that's a lot easier to find than someone with a master's degree and certification in that area, so that, that opened it up for me, and I believe that's very similar to what our local state college does, whenever they were on our campuses, and, and they might have a higher amount of hours with their accrediting agency, but COE, I did the research there, and we need 15 hours of C-level work or higher in that area, so. It's going to be a little easier to find those teachers, so she was trying to encourage me to not give up, that you could do your own gen ed, you know, gen ed classes, so. We're going to do it ourselves, and then I don't have to rely on anybody, and if, if it fails, it's going to be my fault, it won't be anybody else's.
Well, and I, I don't want to put all of that on you, I, I know that, as being an adjunct professor for the two, two of the local colleges here in town, it's 18, at least their requirements are 18 hours of master's level work post-bachelor's degree within the area that you're going to be teaching, so you may have a little bit lenient, more lenient than what theirs are.
If it's gen ed for an AS degree, I believe it might be a little lower, but COE's what I worry about, because that's our accrediting agency, and it is 15, and it's C or- But COE's what I worry about because that's our accrediting agency and it is fifteen and it's C or higher and it's in that area. So, it, it'll be a little easier for us. I'm hoping to get some other tech colleges to do it together as a team. And the reason we want to offer it on, online is so that we can offer it and we can give those students the pathway and they can jump into our professional courses that are all day long. And, um, and we'll require some of that to be done before we'll approve them into the program, so they don't have a heavy load all the way through. We've got it mapped out.
I could, no, and I completely understand that, just again, speaking from the collegiate professor experience, teaching online is different. So, as long as the, all the folks that you're interested in recruiting to put in that spot are willing and able and interested and know what those challenges are, then certainly go gangbusters.
What would really make me happy is going to a group of host of students at a high school or even at an eighth grade level and giving them a flyer that tells them they can take these prereqs, these classes while they're in high school. They can do it with us, online, doing the role. And when they graduate, they can come right into our program, finish our professional classes and, and get an AS degree. That would be pretty cool. I hope I'll be able to see that happen.
Dr. Gullett?
That's okay, ma'am chair, if I, if I may jump in, board, um, I want to thank Mr. Smallridge for his leadership. And what, what you just illustrated is what I think is also really fundamentally important for this community is it's another choice, right? When we talk about expanding choices, it's, it's what you just described. And, and those politics had nothing to do with Marion County, they were outside of here. And because when anything is new, sometimes it, it, at, at a higher level, it gets a little messy between people, it has nothing to do with us. So, I want to just thank you for your leadership and, and staying true to what's been in existence all along. And it's another choice for this community and for our, our students, so thank you.
It's another pathway, thank you.
I just had to piggyback on what, boy, remember Campbell was, was talking about and having it begin and what you said, having this begin. The awareness building in middle school, I would say let's start it in elementary school because a lot of little kids fall off their bikes and break their arms and we all know we have bones and things like that. I mean, there, it's just, I, I, it's everything I love about career and technical education. It's what brings kids in and gets them thinking and, you know, something other than I want to be a famous Olympic person or an NFL player. You know, i- it's just exposure and opportunity. And I'm just really excited for the direction we're going with career and technical education for our kids, it's awesome.
We also were applying for, to do our RN program. It's a practical nurse bridge program from practical, uh, nursing to RN. And it's, uh, being done for the first time in the state down south. And, uh, we're, we're jumping on board with that. You could be an RN going to MTC in two years after graduation, no degrees required. It's, it's strictly a clock hour program. You get the same RN license, you're going to get the same jobs at the same pay and it's, it's a great option. So, we're, we're working on that. We've, we've got to get past a couple, um, clinical placement hurdles and some contracts. And once we get that, we're going to apply to the Board of Nursing for that. And I'll come back and let you guys know about it.
Hey, I know you'll keep us posted, that's right.
Ms. Smallridge, thank you for presenting to us today and, and thank you for, um, rallying for our students. And, um, you know, searching out avenues to help other students succeed. And we're grateful for that and please keep us posted as you work your way, as I was tracking you through your slide. You're about halfway through approval, is that right?
We're halfway through that slide.
Yes, that, yeah, yeah. So, we're just, we're cheering you on, keep, be sure to keep us posted.
Okay, I'll keep you posted, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good day.
Is there any public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to athletic facility prioritizations.
Can we take like a five minute?
Sure. Um, board, would you let, oh, I've got to put my glasses back on, sorry. It is nine thirty-four, let's take a brief recess and come back at, did I say nine?
You said nine.
I did, I am so sorry. It is ten thirty-four, we're going to take a brief recess, uh, let's say we'll be back in ten minutes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Your girl needs a snack.
Welcome back, it is ten forty-five. We are on our item six point one, athletic facilities. Let me see who our presenter is going to be. Dr. Gullett, you're going to introduce our presenter?
Certainly, thank you, Madam Chair. We have, we have Mr. Tucker here with Dr. Brewer. Come forward and share some information. The board has had some conversation on already and coming back with an update of more information on our athletic needs.
Good morning, Chair Conrad, Board Members and Superintendent Dr. Gullett. During the October seventeenth work session, Mr. Tucker and I presented to you a, a large amount of information about all of the high schools and athletic needs. And during that presentation, there was a request, or after that presentation, there was a request from the board to return at a later date with a refined list that narrowed the top priorities and to include a up-to-date dollar amount for each of those items. So, Mr. Tucker has worked closely with the county athletic directors. We actually have three with us today from Bellevue, Vanguard and Westport. They are here to answer any additional questions you may have. But we look forward to your questions and your feedback after the presentation Mr. Tucker will provide to you.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Good morning, Mr. Tucker, how are you?
Good morning, how are you today? It's a, it's a pleasure to be back before you guys today, just to kind of present some more detailed information from our first presentation back in October. This, this presentation today is, is going to be talking more about upgrades and what they can, what they can do for our, our school campuses. Completing these upgrades that we discussed will greatly have a, a big impact on all of our high school communities across the district. Alright, so this first slide talks about all the upgrades that are needed at all the high schools. And the majority of these were on, there's one thing that's not on here that was on our previous presentation, but I will go over that a little bit later and while we left that out, when it comes to, when we get to the cost factors and stuff. So, you can see we have outdoor storage buildings we're going to talk about today, gym scoreboards and shot clocks. And I'll have some rationale as to why we're adding shot clocks to our gyms. Softball and baseball field bleachers and tennis/pickleball court resurfacing and additions for the schools that do not have them currently. So, what's our rationale for these upgrades? Investing in our athletic facilities is essential to providing a positive experience for our athletes, our coaches, our spectators and all of our school communities. Upgrading these scoreboards, adding storage for outdoor sports, upgrading the bleachers on all baseball and softball fields and resurfacing and adding tennis courts on campuses will enhance the functionality and the overall environment for all of our programs. We'll start with outdoor storage buildings. What will this do for our campuses? It's going to help secure and protect all the outdoor sports equipment from the element, elements currently on all of our school campuses. If you were to go to them and ask where they store this stuff, sometimes you'll see some of the schools have jump pits and pole vault pits and stuff for hurdles. They'll have them stored under their bleachers in the football stadium and it's just not a good look. Like, we don't have, there's not enough storage on any of our campuses for, to house all these things. So, we have outdoor storage buildings, bleachers for softball and baseball fields. This kind of will, the majority of our fields have, there's a couple and I'll, I'll talk about it here in a few minutes in another slide. But a lot of our schools have bleachers that are wooden and they, most of them require some type of annual maintenance, either replacing boards, securing them to make them safe for spectators. None of them have handrails that make them ADA compliant and all those kind of things. So, there's a, a great need for this and that's one reason why it's in this presentation. It'll increase our seating options for all spectators and like I just mentioned, all schools will now have sections that will be ADA compliant with handrails incorporated into the bleachers. And it kind of looks like that picture right there. That's a little bit what they look like, the ones that I have priced out, but they're, they're not as tall. They're five rows tall and they seat approximately, each section is twenty-seven foot long and they will seat approximately ninety people with that size. So, moving on to our scoreboards and shot clocks for the gyms. All of our gyms have scoreboards that are at least twenty years old with some approaching the thirty-year mark. We have a couple of high schools that their school boards aren't, scoreboards have quit working and they're kind of to the point where they're beyond repair. And adding the shot clocks in twenty-twenty-seven, it's going to become mandatory in the FHSAA that all basketball games are played with a shot clock. So, that's our rationale for going ahead and adding the shot clocks and getting ahead of the game when it comes to that because they are going to be required for competition. Tennis and pickleball courts currently, four of our high schools have tennis courts on campus. A few years ago, one set was condemned, that's at Denellin High School, so they can't even use their tennis courts, they have to go elsewhere. And three of the high schools do not have courts, period. Adding and repairing the existing courts will allow our tennis teams to compete on their campuses and not have to travel to various locations around the district. So, currently like, let's take North Marion for instance, they have to travel a great distance to practice tennis. They go to Cohagio Park, which is over off of Thirty-Sixth Avenue and Thirty-Fifth Street. So, it's putting, it's, it's requiring our athletes to have to travel a great distance just to practice. So, doing these things will, will help as far as that goes and, and that can be tied to safety if you want to look at it that way, right? So, with those four things, let's talk about cost. So, with the storage buildings, this is a twenty-four by forty-foot metal building. They come at a cost of approximately twenty thousand dollars per school. Concrete slabs for each building are approximately five thousand dollars per school and it's going to depend on the footer depth, the vapor barrier that has to be used. And that comes with the engineering plans and stuff when that, that all comes together. And these prices came from Sean Duncan and facilities, so I, we appreciate him getting to us. So, these are, these are as close as we're going to get to some prices of, of what this will cost. And then power for lights and possible mini splits being added to help with humidity control so stuff doesn't get moldy, especially when it gets hot in Florida, right? So, that's approximately thirty-five thou, or thirty-five hundred dollars per school. Continuing on to the bleachers. The approximate total cost for bleachers is three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That's for thirty-five twenty-seven foot sections, similar to what I was describing earlier. One twenty-one foot section and six fifteen foot sections. And if we go that route, included in that is a five percent rebate from Varsity Brand Sports for campus branding. So, that will allow the athletic directors and the principals to put some school branding around their campuses and further kind of dress them up a little bit and make them look more appealing to the community when they, when they come on these campuses. Concrete slabs for the bleachers and walkways, there's six that are about forty foot by a hundred and eighty foot. That is seventeen thousand dollars each. North Marion High School already has concrete for their baseball field. And then, so that, that depth right there and that size is for baseball fields. And then, the next, there would be six at forty foot by a hundred and twenty foot and that would be about eleven thousand five hundred each. And Lake Ware High School already has concrete all the way around their softball field. And they actually have the bleachers that we're considering purchasing, the ones that we got the, the quotes on. So, and North Marion High School has the exact same bleachers on their baseball field currently. And they have concrete. So, those, those two fields wouldn't need any of this, with the exception of, let me take that back. North Marion High School would take one of the smaller sections because there's, they have a unique situation between like their visitors dugout and the concession stand where they currently have one of our older sets of bleachers that are wooden. And one of the bigger sections wouldn't go in there. So, we would, one of the smaller sections that I talked about earlier would be dedicated to go there. So, everybody would end up with metal bleachers on, on all their facilities. Alright, so scoreboards and shot clocks. This would be, this would be sixteen boards, so there's, there's two boards in each gym. And if you walk in our gyms now, all of them have the same thing. They have one board at one end, one board at the other. And then eight sets of shot clocks, which a set would, would be two of them, right? So, that would be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That includes the boards and the shot clocks for the new high school as well. I had them send me a quote for eight schools versus seven. And they were, there would also be a five percent rebate for, from Varsity Brand Sports if we go with the Daktronic scoreboards. And that would be for branding in the gymnasiums. So, just like we had it for the outdoor sports and stuff for the bleachers with softball and baseball, it will be the same thing for the gyms. Then there's a four thousand, a four thousand dollar upgrade. If needed, all of our schools aren't going to need an upgrade in the power, but some may, depending on the age and what we find when we get in there. Again, talking with Sean and Tech Services, that's a possibility. So, that would be the cost if we have to do that, to run new power for the shot clocks at all seven high schools. Forty thousand dollars would be for the tennis and pickleball courts, that's for resurfacing. Currently, we outsource that to another company. It's not something that we do in-house and that's the approximate cost for one set of tennis courts that we currently have on one of our campuses. So, that would be at our four high schools, right? Now, with the understanding that at Bellevue, they are currently having some structural issues with their, the foundation of their tennis courts. So, it might be a little bit more intrusive, but we won't know that until our facilities department is able to look at that and have a better idea of what's required to make it to where they're safe. I mean, it's not that they're unsafe right now, but there are some issues. I think there's some sinking going on and stuff under the, under the courts. So, that's going to take a little bit more detail. But the average cost would be about forty thousand dollars for resurfacing our already existing courses and then, or courts. And then a hundred thousand dollars would be to add new courts at three schools. So, that would be per school and you'll see that in the breakdown here in a few minutes. That brings us to our cost summary. So, this is our detailed list of the total cost. And you can see all the things that we discussed earlier. Added together puts us at one point, one million three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars for all those improvements. Now, I put this slide in here just as consideration because I know what, what has been discussed in the past. And if we were to go with this, the consideration would be to add a, a rubberized track at one of our current schools right now. That cost would be approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I, I think I talked about that a little bit in my first presentation about rubberized tracks and turf fields. A rubberized track would be five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The recommendation from the athletic department would be to add this track at Westport due to their high volume of track athletes this, this year and every year going forward. They, they tend to have a little more track athletes than, than any of the other high schools do. And in addition to that, the infrastructure at Westport is a little bit better than some of our other schools. I know it's been talked about at Forest in the past. The amount of work that it would take to get the surface at Forest versus at Westport is a whole lot different, as far as the grading that would have to take place. Redoing the drainage, the drainage and stuff because of the crown they have in their football field. Westport would make a whole lot more sense financially because there's a whole lot less work that has to be done. So, that would bring our total to one point nine million dollars or in the neighborhood. That is the end of our presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. We appreciate all the work that went into this. We had, you know, a lot of concerns were brought forward when we had our first presentation about athletics. And so, this, this is a great list. Thank you for gathering this information for us, board.
Yes, ma'am.
Comments and concerns, yes, Mr. Brewer?
Thank you, and this was a great presentation for many reasons. First of all, it condensed into the priorities and price tags attached. So, thank you very much for that. I'm just going to keep it short. We have the money. These are outwardly facing items that the public sees and the students benefit from. I support each thing that, that you have brought forward. And I would encourage the board, let's make a decision because costs continue to escalate. And if we add any enhancements or anything else that gets identified, then what are we going to see? Construction amendments. So, I think we need to strike while the iron's hot, be expedient in this. And at a future conversation, I really do want to talk about Booster though because Vanguard doesn't have a stadium and they need a decent place to play. And I don't see them in play in any of this. So, I'm not going to throw that into the water today, but that's where I am with this.
Thank you, Board Member Brewer. Yes, Dr. James?
Thank you. This, to echo those compliments, this is exactly what we were asking for. And I would say that like going forward, this is exactly what this board member wants to see. Twelve slides, money, needs from the department expert, and then you ask this board to do what we need to do. So, my first question, and I can see Ms. Boston Ellis just for a head shake. Are we, are, have we budgeted one point three or are we going to budget basically two million? Or neither? From a money perspective, that's what I'm looking to understand.
It's the five-year work plan that we haven't had a work session on yet?
No, I, I understand where the money comes from. So, I'm not confused about where the money comes from. What I'm saying is, what I personally have said previously and I will continue to say is I would like to see athletics get their own budget not built in to the facilities' capital work plan. Because then athletics can take their money, and I think Dr. Campbell and I have, have kind of reiterated this many times. We want athletics to have their own money, they come up with their own plan just like this, and then they execute with the money that we've budgeted for them. So, how much money are we going to allocate for athletics? That is my question because I am completely on board with all of this. I have a little heartburn with two rubberized tracks in basically the southwest of the district. I don't think that that's ideal. I do think it would be better to have the track not at Westport since we are putting a track at the new high school CCC. I can respect the opinion on it and I certainly, after having a very passionate discussion with a track coach at, at Westport, I understand the passion behind his desire to have it at Westport. But I think that it would be better served in another part of the district. And that's just my personal opinion, but I will not die on that hill. But what I want to know is where is this money coming from and how are we budgeting it? Because my desire is for there to be a segment of the capital budget that is set aside for athletics. I have maintained that for the last two years. So, that's my question to the finance people, not to really you, Mr. Tucker. And Ms. Boston Ellis is coming up, I know you don't have eyes in the back of your head.
Good morning, Ms. Boston Ellis.
Good morning. As I stated to you all the time, it is your decision as a board where this money comes from. But you have to realize there is something else that is going to suffer. This has to be taken into consideration with everything else in the budget. Where, whether it's staff, whether it's increase in health insurance, whether it is things that we are not even aware of, a reduction in the allocation that we receive from our legislators, all of that has to be taken into consideration. And we have just begun the budget process with, with, and things are due to us on the twenty-fourth. So, I'm not saying that it's not going to be a part of it, but it has to be a decision by the board to do this or not and just know that something else is, is going to have to give if that's sure intent.
And to, to follow up my question if I may. My, my request then, and if the rest of the board or two other board members would agree, my request would be as we're going into this budget cycle, can we see a reality where we give a, a line item budget that's not, not, doesn't include all of these athletic items in the five-year work plan, but instead is a budget allocated to athletics? And then athletics comes before the board and does a five-year work plan with their money that we are allocating for athletics? That is what this board member wants to see so that we are ensuring we are preserving the continued improvement of athletics in Marion County.
Mr. Tucker has a budget and each department has an opportunity to provide their requests for budget. And then it goes through the entire process of what can we really afford as a district? So, he can put it in his budget, no one would tell him not to do that. But the total amount, I think you probably all need to talk about. If it's truly a five-year plan, if you take two million dollars over five years, you're talking about two hundred thousand dollars.
So, I'm saying two million dollars a year. I want, this board member wants to see, we are so, I mean, we are spending so much money to prioritize our educational facilities and that we have a sales tax, we have impact fees and we are doing our due diligence to improve our academic facilities. We are so behind in our athletic facilities. We have, just like busing and transportation, we said, we talked about some big numbers for busing. We have got to prioritize our athletic facilities as well. And so, what I'm saying is, and if that's the way of the work and Mr. Tucker continues to submit two million dollars a year and then, and then it comes to the board in the budget cycle and we talk about it. But what I heard Board Member Brewer say, which I agree with, is I want this to start now because I want, what are, what's the potential that this could happen for the start of next year's seasons? And so, I want to see us make a decision and waiting on the budget cycle, it will not allow that to happen at all. So, th- that is my desire as a board member.
Thank you, and I appreciate it, Ms. Boston Ellis, understanding the process. Honestly, this conversation has to precede the five-year work plan conversation because all of these items here, if the board says yes, move forward with two million dollars moving forward to athletics out of the facilities' work plan, because all of these are, are not in the buckets that you said. I understand if we give additional money to athletics and, and operational costs and, and if we hired more athletic directors or we hired more coaches or, all of that comes out of different buckets. This right here comes out of capital. And so, we understand that all of these dollars right here would come out of the five-year work plan. And, and we would be cutting potentially an AC or a roof or something, somewhere else that might be on the plan already if we allocate these two million dollars. I think what I'm hearing from Board Member James, as well as what I'm going to say is, what we've been asking for is this, that we do have an allocation out of the capital budget every year to start playing catch-up because we are so far behind. And I'm grateful that Mr. Tucker has put together a plan. If I have another conversation about scoreboards in my time as a board member, I don't know what I'm going to do. I, I, I can't begin to tell you the number of conversations I've had with community members that are appalled, appalled at how our scoreboards operate on all of our campuses and the amount of money that they know that we get, a, a billion-dollar budget. How in the world can we not have two working scoreboards in a gymnasium? I, I mean, and I know we're never going to allocate money to the MTI gym because Osceola's getting a beautiful new gym and we've already talked about that. But my scene, my eighth grader in his last year of middle school basketball is playing without a scoreboard at MTI. It's something manual sitting on a table that you can't even see. So, I, this conversation, I am grateful we're having it today. I am all for it. I am all for starting the rubberized track conversation as well. And I actually will disagree that Westport isn't the right place to start. The reason I'm going to say it's the right place to start is for a couple of reasons. Number one, as Mr. Tucker identified, two different reasons for that. They have the most track athletes of any school in our district. Additionally, they have the facility arrangement that would make it the easiest first spot to start with potentially the least expensive start for us. Additionally, the geographic location of where that school is, is perfect across from the county's swimming facility. Additionally, the geographic location of where that school is, is perfect across from the county's swimming facility, as well as a county recreation facility, where there are already other county fields that make that a perfect spot for outside entities to want to come in and give this district revenue. So, I think that's actually the first perfect spot to start with a rubberized track. I am all for what has been presented today. All for the tune of two million dollars afforded to capital, so that gives you that little bit of cushion based on what you've put here. And I too, like Ms. Thrower, Chair, would like to request a special work session, not a special, an additional work session to talk specifically about Booster Stadium. I wrote that down. I wanna talk about Booster Stadium from the perspective of a public-private partnership. I want that to happen ahead of our next technical working group meetings, as well as the next public school, PSPO that we just had yesterday, because I believe there's an opportunity for us to get serious about requesting tourism development tax dollars for what an upgrade there would look like. The county is already doing that, and that was a lot of conversation. You've seen in the newspaper what they're doing and what they're talking about. We need to be at that table, because Booster Stadium is something unique in this community that currently the county doesn't have in their repertoire, and we need to make that a part of that conversation. So, that concludes my comments on this. Thank you.
Yes, Reverend Cummings.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker, just got a couple, couple questions. Good, very good slide presentation. The bleachers, um, those are, those are like mobile-type bleachers, correct?
The one in the picture, the ones that we would be, that we put out for, to get the quotes on and stuff, they're, they would be bolted into the concrete. That's the purpose for the concrete, so they're, they're stationary, they're, they're bolted in.
And that's why I asked, I'm looking at the picture, and see it has like a trailer on it. I know there's some bleachers that are mobile that they were pulling out for like bigger events and graduations. I was thinking about the ones at Bellevue High School, that I know that are on the side, but I think those are mobile from time to time, so that was a question. And going to the sheds, what happened? What happens, um, let me say, let me say it differently. There used to be, uh, schools had field houses. Do they still, do the schools still have the field houses? And did they, do they still store any, any stuff in the field houses? Is it just football? What?
They're usually locker rooms for football, and some of them contain the weight rooms as well, like at Dunellen. That's how their setup is out there by the stadium. Vanguard's is on campus, obviously. Westport doesn't have one out there for any of those. Those, I was talking about that earlier, because that was in one of my presentations for outdoor sport locker rooms in the previous, back in October. And those, there's options, but they are long-term, they can be a cash cow. Like if you get into modular locker rooms, storage containers, things like that. So, Ms. Boombach was gracious enough to get me a quote from, based off what the, what we're doing at the new high school, for just an outdoor locker room facility that has bathrooms and showers in it. And those come at a cost of about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars each. So, that's why I didn't include it in this, because they are needed around the district, but that's, I mean, that's almost half of what we were considering for a budget for this.
That's your wish list.
That's, that's, that would be a big wish listing. So, currently, some of our outdoor sports have portable buildings, several that come, you know what I mean? So, and there's no storage for equipment and stuff in those buildings as they currently sit.
And I can get on board, and I ask that for a reason. I've seen some of the, the, um, where we, where we've been putting stuff, where we're housing stuff. And, and for what I see, it costs us money to do what we're doing right now, because the wear and tear, the elements, the molding, all those different types of things. So, I can see the need for this. I, I'm wondering, is, is that size shed gonna be big enough to accommodate all the things that you need to do with a, um, with the, the, the number of athletic activities on those campuses? If that's what you're saying, that's what you're recommending. But I, I definitely see the need. Scoreboards, I'm looking at the picture of the scoreboard. It's, it's a little different than what I'm thinking, and I'm just asking a question. It has detached shot clock. They don't do the all-in ones?
No, sir.
Okay, so they made, so because of FHSA, that's the, that's the one that they have to go with?
Well, and the scoreboards, the, the ones that have a shot clock integrated, really are not, it's, it's not what we would want, because it's hard to get them to function for several different sports. Because you gotta remember, like, some of these schools have wrestling, and the scoreboards that are going in these gyms can convert to being used for wrestling, volleyball, basketball. And, and part of the recommendation is going to be going with this. There are some school districts that our schools have been in their gyms, and they put the shot clocks over the backboards, right? So, they're, they run power down the backside where you can't see it, and they mount them to the side of the post, like, because you know how they raise and stuff and writers. So, that, that is where we would want to have them put. That's how, that's how we arrived at the cost for the power.
Well, the shot clocks are not like the one in the pictures, shot clocks you're talking about are gonna be on the.
Correct.
Okay.
That's just an online picture. That's not something of how ours would look.
Yeah, 'cause I was thinking, if I'm playing the game, I'm not a basketball player, never been. But I would wanna know, see the shot clock, would I have to turn around and, you know?
Right.
For the shot clock. I would wanna be where I'm shooting at, so, but, uh, you, you, you answered it, you answered, you answered what I was trying to get to. The, um, other, my final question. How, we, how many rubberized tracks do we have now currently?
Zero.
None. Several years ago, I, I came to the board and asked about us doing the rubberized track at Westport because of the need at Westport, because of the, um, the high percentage of students that were using it for track and field. At that time, I think I mentioned that if it was a rubberized track, we could host more activities at that school, which could generate more revenue, correct?
Yes, sir.
Because you could host regional, state, district meets at that school. And because of the location of, uh, Westport, and the size, the accessibility. So, um, I'm, I'm happy to see this on this list for Westport. I, I'm, I'm thrilled to see that. I, I'm, I'm, I'm listening to Ms. Boston Ellis as well. We do know these need to be prioritized, prioritized. We just need to make sure that as we proceed with this, that we do take into consideration that there has to be, we don't have, we don't have unlimited money. We don't have unlimited money. But some of these things have been going on for years. When you see that, um, scoreboards that are twenty years old and, and, and different things. You just gotta make sure that whatever decisions we make, and I, I understand about making it an item in the budget and trying to have us set up a line item apart from capital. But we just gotta make sure again, as we proceed, um, I, I, I for, I'm not a prophet, but I just forecast some difficult days ahead financially. Um, and we need to be smart as we move forward. And, um, I would love to give every school everything that they're asking for. I do think this is, um, this is a good ask, Mr. Tucker. Definitely think it's a good ask.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Mr. Tucker, I wanna say thank you again. I, just reminiscing about your presentation in October, and I walked away feeling like, my gosh, we're never gonna catch up. We're so far behind. And so, I just wanna say again that I'm very thankful for the time and effort that you and your team took to narrow this down to something that the board could focus on, and you did a really great job. I, the first couple items have a lot to do with softball and baseball. Does that get those two sports in good shape?
Very much so.
Okay.
That'll make a huge difference.
Good, very good. Well, I'm happy to hear it. I think, um, that we have to make athletics a priority if we want to see improvement in that area, 'cause we're not gonna get anywhere with just what's left over, because there's never any money left over. So, we're gonna have to prioritize it, and to me, it sounds like you have the support of the board to do that, with the understanding that there's gonna be some difficult decisions coming before us. But I, I personally feel like athletics has been towards the bottom of the list for a very long time. And our students deserve to have a better place to work and play. And I see Dr. James has got her hand up here.
Well, I just, I wanted to go back to the, you asked a question, does this put baseball and softball in a good place? And you affirm that, Mr. Tucker, but we, I, I don't know that I agree. So, at Dunellen, there's nowhere for girls to change. So, and that's just Dunellen. I can, I can speak to the other schools. And so, I, I just want it to be crystal clear that we're gonna still have softball players at Dunellen changing in their vehicle, because they literally have nowhere to change. So, if there is a scenario where we put a slightly bigger metal structure, and we're able to subdivide some changing rooms potentially in there, or just do some very basic, not even maybe putting toilets out there, just putting some closeted changing rooms in some of these so that we would be able to allow our female athletes places to change that are not their vehicle, that is what this board member wants to see. I think that there is still some Title IX issues happening in this district. And if we're going to do this, and it's another ten thousand dollars to put a slightly bigger shed and build out two, you know, five-by-five closets that we could make changing stations for some of our female athletes, that is what I would like to see, because it is not getting us, I appreciate your enthusiasm, but it is not getting us to where we need to be. There are still some significant issues for baseball and softball. And I mean, I'm not familiar, if I dare say the word scoreboard, but I know that we did work for Bellevue High School, and that was a longstanding issue for Bellevue, um, Bellevue's baseball and softball. But I don't know of, um, the other conditions at all of the other schools. But my guess would be that there's probably still improvement for scoreboards in baseball and softball at some of the other sites as well. So, I just would like to say that like, if there's a way we can just spend a little bit more money and meet some, close these gaps for female athletes with regards to these storage sheds, and if that's a possibility, I would like to see that.
Mr. Tucker, I watched, thank you, Dr. James, you, you jotted something in my mind about that, uh, locker rooms for females and stuff. Then at one point, and I, I, I kinda remember this when my son was there, we kinda had like some, some portables or something that we use for like a field house for, for them at, at Forest. I seem like I remember my son was a freshman, the Forest still does, for the different, um, is that something that's possible? Because that is a, that is a real issue. There's a little Title IX issue out there at Dunellen.
We, that, that does happen currently. A few of our schools I know at Lake Weir, they have a portable, I think for male, for baseball and softball. Each have their own. I know North Marion Softball has a portable. Forest, you're correct, they have one for softball. Westport, I believe, has, is that right? Yeah, so Westport has a portable for each, um, baseball and softball. So, currently, the majority of the schools function either with something attached to their dugout, or they have, um, they have portable buildings, except for Dunellen.
So, if there's a way we can close that gap without adding, I mean, we're not buying a brand-new portable, and lord knows, we probably are in a portable deficit going into next year, because we're still closing the gap. So, um, I, I see facilities smirking, so that means we're definitely in a deficit. So, I don't necessarily know that that's the solution, but if we can get creative and maybe throw some closets in the metal building, I don't know, just something, because I would like to, I would like for those female athletes to have the privacy to change.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. All right, Mr. Tucker, I think, oh, Dr. Campbell.
No, I, I just wanted to say thank you for, for bringing that up, because I understand, as we all do, that this is by far not an exhaustive list, and we are only just beginning. And I absolutely appreciate if there is something else we can do this year to ensure the equitability on all of our campuses, that all of our male and female athletes are receiving the same kind of, at least facility to change in. Absolutely, let's add that to the list. It wasn't something that was added here. And to the comment about baseball and softball scoreboards, even just baseball and softball in general. We, we are so far away from everybody having the same. Starting with basketball gymnast, let's say, starting with gymnasium scoreboards covers a multitude of sports alone. And so, that isn't just one, baseball fields are terrific, but there's only one sport you play on them. Same thing with softball fields, absolutely. We want wonderful facilities. There's only one sport there. If you have one gymnasium on your campus, you have boys and girls volleyball, boys and girls basketball, weightlifting, wrestling, boys and girls. There, there's, there's just so many sports that these scoreboards, prioritizing this first is gonna be a huge benefit. I also wanted to say, I think, again, thank you to Mr. Tucker, thank you to the team that's put this together. Thank you for our athletic directors in the, in the room today. Also, thank you to the principals that have advocated significantly, understanding the value of athletics on their campuses, and how just this small step, two million dollars isn't small, but just this small step this board is starting to put forward, in a forward-facing manner, to help their schools with beautification of their campuses, and more pride in what their schools can offer. I'm just grateful that we're having this conversation, that we're prioritizing it, board. I'm glad to be a part of a board that is doing this, and, and ensuring that this is the direction we are moving forward. But thanks again to the athletic directors here and the principals that have been advocating behind the scenes as well, because they see the value of what this can do, and, and how some of these things can be that pathway out for students that really need to understand the value of teamwork and character building, and all that sports bring, regardless of a score on a scoreboard. Thank you.
I'm Chair. And one more thing, Mr. Tucker, and thank you to our A.D.s that came out as well. Have we, have we, have we, have we as a district, or have we as, um, A.D.s and schools reached out to some of our, um, our graduates that have gone on to pro-level sports? And, and showed them the need? Have we, um, expressed to them, you know, hey, I, I know, I know in Dunellen, I know Ernie Mills came back and did, did the field house for them. There, there are, we have some grads that went on to do some great things, and that are currently in professional, unprofessional teams. Have we thought about us reaching out to them and saying, hey, this is what, this is what our need, showed them what our needs are as far as athletics? Because some of their success, their success would not have been as great as it is had they not came through public school system. Had they not had some facilities that they were able to, to do what they do. Have we thought about that?
There have been some conversations, yes. I mean, it's nothing.
I mean, we don't wanna put anybody on the spot.
Correct.
But, but I, but, no, no.
Partners in education.
I think a closed mouth don't get fed, and, and we need to start, um, reaching back, because ultimately, um, they benefited from what's there now. And we want it to be a bit better.
Yes, sir.
I did think of one other thing unrelated to that, although the answer's always no if you don't ask, so I'm always willing to ask. I have been doing some digging into the ways we transport our athletes. Mr. Tucker knows that I'm working on this with Dale Hall, specifically on the north end, Attorney Powers. We've kind of started having conversations, board, because when our teams show up to out-of-county stuff, there are fifteen-passenger vans transporting students. Now, the, the position of this board, this board, because it's our policy and then the way of practice, is that we are not allowed to transport students in fifteen-passenger vans. So, I have tasked Attorney Powers that in our policy update, we are going to dig deeply into why we can't ride in fifteen-passenger vans, but other districts can. Because other districts are showing up with a fully wrapped, it's not a rental, like this is a wrapped rental, uh, wrapped, fully done-out fifteen-passenger van, which is a more than ample size for basketball, for a lot of our smaller sports. And so, unless, and I, this really, this all came up because I started serving as a huddle leader for FCA for North Marion High School's coaches' breakfast once a month. And so, it's created a lot of opportunity for some candid conversation, and I really have enjoyed it. But, you know, our girls' basketball traveled over two hours on a Thursday, and then back again on a Monday. They lost both times, bless their heart, and they drove over two hours one direction for a basketball game. And that coach, and then those parents, had to privately transport their students on their miles, not being reimbursed. And we have a, we have a gap in our program, and if you don't have a parent who's willing to support you in your athletics, you may very well not be, be able to participate. And if you don't have a parent who's willing to support you in your athletics, you may very well not be, be able to participate. And so, and then the other issue is, we can't take the activity buses that we do have out of county, because they're not reliable enough to leave the county line. So, then, what do our, what does our sports do, who is not an income driver? They're not creating a lot of money, but they need to travel to the villages and they also need to be there at three-thirty. Because our busing system cannot give a bus of hours for them to ride. So then what, they have to rent? They either have to go rent multiple minivans, or they have to rent a charter bus. And all of that is probably, they're not even gonna create enough revenue to even be able to close the gap on that. So, we really, truly, and this is not something the board needs to pay for. I think the schools have enough partnerships that they would absolutely be able to raise funds and start closing the gap on this. But we need to figure out how to allow the schools the opportunity to transport their children in a fifteen passenger van. We allow it in the childcare industry, DCF allows it. I can't figure out why high schools' sports cannot be transported. And so, my, my prayer is that Attorney Powers and the team are gonna be able to come up with a solution for this so that we can start doing what other districts are already doing. So, I, I, I was triggered by that and remembered, and I wanted to make sure the board knew that that's something I've been focusing on.
Dr. James, Dr. James, doesn't a passenger, y'all may.
No, you just need a regular, your regular driver's license. Yeah.
I, I thought at some point they had changed it.
It, it's a, I think it's a thirteen passenger, technically it's fifteen seats, but it's, no, you just need a regular driver's license. But even then, we have, but, we have coaches, like the assistant A.D. at North Marion, who has a CDL and would be more than willing to drive a bus out of county. He'd love the money to be able to drive the bus out of county, but we don't even have the resources for him to be able to drive. So, most of our high schools have individuals with CDLs who'd be willing. But we don't even have the resources to be able to give them the vehicle to drive.
And to give it the, the brief, uh, I'm sorry, there's a board member wanna speak first, so.
I mean, you, you may be saying what I'm gonna say. I, I have the email from Mr. Ostanik in February that, from the Director of School Transportation for the Florida Department of Education, that says twelve to fifteen passenger vans are prohibited for sale, rent, or lease to a school system for student transportation. So, I, I'm not certain if it's gonna take a DOE change. I would assume that potentially, and this is an assumption, so Attorney Powers, I'm, I'm looking forward to the research on it. But those that already have them potentially are grandfathered in. And Department of Education rule now says that you can't purchase new ones. I could be wrong on that, but I'm, I'm just.
Department of Education guidance, but the, 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 uh, uh, Mr. Ostanik is correct. That is guidance that comes from FDOE on this issue. There is, uh, the, the, the two-minute version is that there was a, uh, up until twenty twenty-one, there was a um laws that specifically just prohibited within Florida. Florida statute prohibited the use of fifteen passenger vans. Um, federal law really has been consistent and really hasn't changed. Um, Florida law then took back some of that to make it more flexible and grant increased flexibility. There is also flexibility that is granted under the statute to high school principals to make specific decisions and calls. That being said, what happened is when the legislature rolled back its restrictions, the Florida legislature doesn't have any impact on what's still required under federal law. Under federal law, multi-activity function bus, there's a lot of requirements. That's what FDOE is pointing out now, is the fact that in their guidance, they say that, look, despite the fact that we removed it from Florida books, Florida's no longer a, uh, Florida law is no longer an impediment. Um, you are, it is going to be a tough road to hoe to make sure that everything is compliant with federal law. But we're not gonna be the one standing in the way. So, federal law means that when you look through the federal, as are, as the case of most federal statutes, it's highly complex. Um, I've gotten already sort of a, a general summary of what that is. But the problem is now is that FDOE, the guideline that they say is just, don't do it. But they don't give a, actual, you know, very good explanation for detail of that. But it is, they have a valid point, and uh quite obviously, that there are safety requirements. It can't just be any passenger van. It has to be, um, it has to meet federal laws for school transport. There's questions of whether it can be a district-owned vehicle versus a common carrier. Um, that's why rental vans are sometimes permitted and allowed. Um, there's cross-references to changes in liability. So, in some of these instances, it is that um a district may choose to do it and the district may also choose to accept increased liability. Um, that may also have impacts with how we ensure things and there's, there's a number of factors there as well. So, I told you I'd give you the two-minute version, that is a two-minute version, but there, there's a lot going on there. And um.
Yes, I, and that's why I wanted to bring it up to the whole board, that my goal is when we talk policy, we're gonna talk about this and we're gonna problem solve. If maybe, so the district can't buy it, so maybe boosters buy it. Is that, is that a loophole? Is that a workaround? I don't know. But I wanna, I wanna get creative and I wanna think outside the box. And if it means it needs to be part of potentially legislative priorities in a year from now, then we talk about that. I don't know. But, um, it's something that I think we need to discuss.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you for bringing that forward, Dr. James. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. I think, um, I think you have consensus on um bringing that forward to us.
As each of the contracts come forward, then we'll be voting on them. And I think you also have consensus on the rubberized track at Westport.
With an emphasis on trying to find a solution for Dunellen girls.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Okay, seeing none. Um, moving down our agenda, um, we have, who am I? We talked so long that I got locked out. Um, we are not discussing seven point one, the evaluation for the superintendent. But I did tell you, board, that I would bring um some options forward and they are very few after I, I met with Legal, so, um.
Options?
Yes, what, what we can do moving forward, that are incorrect word.
Options for?
How we're going to move forward.
For what?
For hiring a new superintendent.
I thought we came to consensus just Tuesday night, that we were gonna talk about that at a special administrative briefing and work session on March twenty-fourth at nine AM.
We did, and I said that I would bring today just through, just options. And I had, at that point, I had spoken briefly with Legal. And there were a couple of options I was going to share with you to think over, so you would be, be prepared for conversation on Monday.
Yeah, we went a lot around and round about agendized items. And now here we are on a topic that is flaming all over the community and it's not even on the agenda, but that's all I'm gonna say.
I, I remember that what we said was, we were gonna enter into comments. And in the chair's comments, she was going to prep the board for a conversation for Monday the twenty-fourth. And she was going to give us information so that we can be prepared and mull over and understand the scope of the conversation for Monday the twenty-fourth. That is what I recall, is, is the nature in which we said we were going to approach the conversation. I think Dr. Campbell even said in comments, if I remember, but.
I, I, I just also remember Attorney Powers saying there would be, we're not going into conversation. We're just simply, I'm giving a very short list. So, um, board, it, it's, it's your pleasure. I, I'm happy to take comment.
Right. The only thing I'll throw in was that um my request was simply that when you, if you're gonna discuss those items in board comments, that in order for there to be any sort of work session, um, content for us to be able to provide further and flesh out details, I will need some direction from the board, just on what the initial, um, I, I want, I want the board to be informed of, for example, RFPs, things like that, the things that might need to be done, just so you're on the same page, without having to continue and individually do all of your own research on potential options. You have it's, as sort of a starting floor of, of what those would be. And then full discussion would be something that would uh happen during, and it would perhaps even one of many uh work sessions beginning on the twenty-fourth. But I just, uh, I think that my understanding was that the board chair was going to, during her comments, give a slight summary of input of what options there are based on FSBA, fire, uh, previous RFPs, things of that nature.
Attorney Powers is setting, so, um, I see it, uh, Campbell, yes, Dr. Campbell, sorry.
Thank you. I seem to recall the conversation and we did discuss that there would be items that would be brought forth during board comments. If that's when you wanna share this information, I think that would be perfect. I know my recommendation on Tuesday evening, no offense to Attorney Powers, but if we have not had any conversation at all with the Florida School Board Association, who are the experts in helping school boards work through superintendent appointments? And what the process looks like, um, I understand Attorney Powers has not been through the process before. So, I'm, I'm grateful that we're going to have a full work session, but if we haven't actually consulted the consultants that we have, that we pay a lot of dues to receive and use at no cost extra to us, um, then I highly recommend that be a part of the conversation over the course of the next week before Monday.
And I, I think that the input that I've been able to research and provide so far really talks about prior to getting to that portion of the process. It talks more about the, um, the fact that the FSBA, um, a, along with several other vendors, do in fact have RFP processes for setting up these kind of items. And that, uh, I mean, I'll let, I'll let, I'll let you guys discuss this however you want to in your board comments. I was asked simply to give some background on how a process looks. And now, not, not how the selection occurs by any means. Essentially, what do we do as far as, do we set this up for bid as an RFP? Or do we go to um FSBA and allow them to be the, the ones we choose? That's all up to you. But there are things that need to be done. I'll let Ms. Campbell speak and you talk about what you want to talk about.
With all due respect, I potentially am the only board member sitting up here that has had a conversation with FSBA. And at no time was it discussing an RFP process for them to be the consultant that we choose to do a superintendent search. FSBA and the leader of FSBA has walked multiple districts through a timeline, through is July even a possibility? If there's conversation about an elected versus appointed, what, what is that? Those kinds of generic conversations that are completely apart from a superintendent search. And that's what we pay dues for, to receive consulting services on all of those overarching questions that are resonating all throughout our community right now. So, that's why on Tuesday evening, I requested that actually today, we have Andrea Messina be able to answer some of those questions publicly that I've received from her already. I don't know what your questions were, I knew what mine were, but I had hoped that this board would have that far before considering an actual agreement with anybody to conduct a superintendent search. Timelining things, giving us ideas on what things might look like, how we talk to our community or not. Ultimately, the, the decision is up to the five people sitting here on the direction that we move forward and how we do that. And I just thought, again, we pay a lot of money to that association and they do a lot more for us as board members than just also paying them an additional fee to do a superintendent search.
Correct. And Dr. Campbell, I would just say that from my input, the only thing that I had uh to speak to that was the fact that um, there are different ways it may be done. And doing exactly as you are uh outlining is one option. Other districts also, also have engaged in RFPs. I have absolutely no interest in, or it doesn't matter to me what the board decides. Other districts have had specifically um a department, sometimes their legal department, do most of the work. Also, not something I'm particularly interested in, but that's however you want to decide. There are different ways to go about this and some of them will obviously be quite preferable to what our district needs are. Um, so, I don't have a dog in this hunt, except to say how you guys need to be able to discuss things and, and know at least what options are on the table. Advise from, you go from there.
I, I don't disagree with Chair Campbell, uh, sorry, um, Board Member Campbell. I, we pay FSBA a lot of money. If FSBA wants to join us on Monday the twenty-fourth and provide their opinion as to what we do next. At, not for a superintendent search, but what we do next. I am, if, I've, I've never been in disagreement with FSBA coming and doing that. I didn't want them to do it today, because it wasn't agendized. So, the agenda item is now, Monday the twenty-fourth. I would love for FSBA to come on Monday the twenty-fourth and provide that guidance. In addition, what I thought was that Chair Conrad, having had chair privileged discussions, would simply send us on our way today with, hey, my conversations with the attorney have looked like this. Please do some research, just attach, and if, you know what, if, if the um Chair Conrad, if your thoughts need to be uploaded on Monday when Ms. Martinez publishes the work session, Monday the, Monday's the fourteenth, right? Monday's the whatever day, you know what I'm talking about, Monday the seventeenth? If, when the item is published on Monday the seventeenth, if you upload your thoughts there, um, so that we can all review them timely, then that's fine too. But the chair has clearly had some level of a, a more in-depth conversation with not just our superintendent, but also Attorney Powers, as you are privileged to do as the chair. So, I think communicating your conversations you've had to the rest of the board would be important. And so if that gets uploaded in a document for Monday's, um, Monday's publication, Ms. Martinez, then that's fine with me too. Um, but I, I would like to know what conversations you've had, so that we can then go into, we can all go into a Monday the twenty-fourth conversation on the same footing. And we're all prepared with the same information, so that then when FSBA and Attorney Powers and everyone else share what we're gonna do next, we all are going into it with the same information.
Thank you. And, you know, we've already been talking about this way longer than I'm comfortable, but I'm looking forward to hearing your quick list. And hopefully it's not something that should have been on the agenda.
Madam Chair, um, we've been here before, let me say that. We've been here before, um, just a few years ago. And there is a process that's already that we established a couple of years ago. Um, Board Member Thoreau and I were on that board. Um, I'm sure Legal has the historical, um, documents that shows what to do. Um, and as uh Dr. Campbell said, FSBA is, um, we're a member of FSBA. And FSBA does also, and I think what's kind of throwing stuff is people not understanding that we are a part of FSBA and they are consultants, but FSBA also does superintendent searches. And I think that's the part that's, people are kinda inter, intermingling. Um, as, as members of FSBA, they have the right, we have the right to ask them for uh cons, consultation on how to proceed, which they gave us the last time before. It's already documented.
We didn't use them.
And we did not use them as the search, um, as the consultant for them to do the search. So, um, the chair does have privilege, as, as, because I know this, I was the chair at that time. The chair does have privilege to bring forth in her comments any um things that she may want to uh kinda help guide us on, direct us on. But the meeting should be the twenty-fourth, is which we agreed upon the other night. And then at that time, we'll come, come forth, we're supposed to come forth and, and start having a serious, more serious conversation about that. Um, if people are having heartburn about having this conversation today, um, guess what? Buy you some tons, because you're gonna have more heartburn, because it's coming down the road.
No heartburn for me, I just wanted to be publicly transparent.
You just need to be completely transparent and get ready for, for what's gonna happen. But there is a, there is a map that we already have that I'm sure is in Legal.
And that's what I was asked to share, and that's what I've, and, and where you go from here is the board's decision.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. And, and, and Legal had great things to say about the process the last time. It landed us with um hiring Dr. Gullett, so it was a successful run. It went very well. I was told I wasn't here, um, but they do have a lot of historical data on how that process went. Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. And I appreciate that again, and this will be the last comment I make about this today. Because with all due respect, I understand we have historical information on how the superintendent search and the timeline went before. This board had two years to do that at that time, because the amendment was changed in the county in twenty eighteen on a ballot, and we had two solid years. At this point, that is not the timeline I hope this board considers. So, that's my only consideration here. You have historical knowledge. We have not been in this position before. Thank you.
Dr. Campbell, you're absolutely right. Um, the initiative did go forth on the ballot. And um, we didn't, we, we did not use, we did not have two years. It may have looked like we had two years. But we did not have two years. I can assure you of that. It was very, very short. It was very short. The process probably was less, uh, the whole time was done while one person was the chair. So, I know it, it wasn't two years. But again, that's all in the records.
Alright, thank you for that. Alright, we're gonna move on. Um, item number eight, the school board attorneys has been withdrawn from the agenda. So, we're gonna move on to board comments. Ms. Martinez?
Nothing, Madam Chair, thank you.
Attorney Powers?
Nothing further, thank you.
Dr. Gullett?
Nothing further for me, thank you.
Nothing further from me. Thank you.
Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. Uh, just quickly, Board, I am intending to attend the Marion County Day at the Capitol on April 10th. There is also a reception the evening before, uh, that we've been invited to. I'm certain you all have received that and that will be recognizing, Senator Baxley, and so looking forward to that as well. Just wanting to make you all aware, I, I intend to, to go up again. I also wanted to say I would be remiss if I didn't bring up the South Ocala, a reading day, a Read Across America, because I was so focused on all the high school things that are happening. Having a senior, my brain is on senior things. And so, uh, I had the opportunity to read to a group of kindergartners and we read Bee Dance and that was incredibly fun because, we were able to get the wiggles out and do our flap our wings and talk about how bees can't talk. And so they don't have other ways to communicate other than just flapping their wings and buzzing and, and they have to spin around in circles. And it was just really fun as a communicator to read a book about communication among bees and really does talk about the sophistication that we as humans have in our communication endeavors. Uh, grateful yesterday for a very well-led meeting, Chair Conrad, for the Intergovernmental Meeting of the Public School Planning Organization. The Public School Planning Organization, as spelled out by the Intergovernmental, uh, excuse me, Interlocal Agreement, consists of all of the elected officials within all of the municipalities in Marion County, including the School Board. And, uh, looking forward to continued conversations and where that can go. Grateful that Dr. Gullett brought in consultants to help get our county and cities and school district all on the same page so that we can have as accurate as possible data to be able to communicate and share. We're only as good as the information we have. And so we can't operate in silos and the more we operate in silos, the worse off this entire community is from a planning perspective. And so I'm grateful that we have the opportunity now to come together and have those collective collaborative conversations and just looking forward to continued forward momentum in what public school planning looks like for the entire organization. I think I heard a comment yesterday about, we're going to give you what you need so you can do what you're going to do. The meeting we had yesterday, according to the Interlocal Agreement, is of the Public School Planning Organization. And every person around that table makes up that organization. So it's not an us and them based on the Interlocal Agreement. And so I'm, I'm grateful, Chair, again, that you've chaired that and that we will hopefully have another meeting in the fall where the Public School Planning Organization can talk about how we together can plan where best to put public schools. And with the data that our consultant, that the school system has hired, will be able to put together, will also benefit the community for parks planning and transportation planning. And wouldn't it be great to know where students will be living so they can plan where the next best park will be? So just grateful for that and looking forward to what that looks like and, um, looking forward to spring break. And I know my kids didn't even want to go to school today. I know it's Senior Skip Day for some. My son is at school today, but I know several are not. Uh, but, uh, yeah, that, that was interesting to hear that conversation. And, uh, just looking forward to having a restful spring break. Every administrator I've spoken with, I've encouraged them to make sure they get some rest and come back rejuvenated to finish out this school year as strong as absolutely they possibly can, and I know they will. And, uh, then we'll come back bright and ready on Monday morning at 9:00 AM to have this continued conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Uh, Dr. James?
Thank you. Um, I don't have a whole lot of thoughts. I'm grateful for the conversation today. I'm grateful to see this board continue to, um, add athletics to our list of top priorities. It's a, it's the, the list of top priorities is continuing to grow, but, um, we, there's so much data to support that student athletes do such amazing things on our campuses. And, um, as Dr. Campbell had mentioned, I, I want to continue to prioritize sports that are going, um, sport improvements that are going to touch a lot of students. Um, and a rubberized track is going to also include a lot of students. And so, um, I am looking forward to these continued conversations about our athletic facilities and ensuring that we are, um, meeting Title IX requirements and acknowledging our female athletes as well. That's, um, certainly a top priority. Um, wanted to just speak just briefly. Uh, I am underwhelmed with the consultant we've hired, JB Pro. And so, uh, I did request to see how much money we've spent to date. And I know that there's stuff in the hopper and I've asked what that amount is. Um, I, I really am hopeful that when we come back together in September, we're going to see more. I thought yesterday, um, while Chair Conrad did a wonderful job leading the work, um, it felt kind of like it could have been an email. And so I know that the Interlocal, um, dictates that us, we meet in person, but, uh, when, when we are, when we are essentially requiring all of us to come together to plan, I want that meeting and that time to be best spent. And, um, I, I, I do not think we got that yesterday. So in addition to them not knowing the law is required for recording procurements, which happened a couple of weeks back, I just am incredibly underwhelmed with the service we are being provided by them. And I sure do hope that it is going to improve. Otherwise, this board member is going to have further discussion about doing something different. So that's all I got for today. I look forward to a restful spring break and us coming back on Monday, the 24th and, um, starting some deep dive into our next steps as a district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, very, um, very, very, uh, informative meeting this morning. Um, and I will even say productive meeting this morning. We, we heard some presentations on the SRO contract as well as the, uh, presentation for, um, athletics. Um, both were nee- needful. I think, um, I think we, we did get some places where we need to go in both conversations. Um, I am truly, truly looking forward to, uh, 5:00 tomorrow because at 5:00 tomorrow, it will officially be Reverend Cummings' spring break. I will not be taking any calls from anybody from the school district, anybody associated with, with MCPS. No, I'm just kidding. I'm, I'm looking forward to spring break. And if I'm looking forward to spring break and I'm not in the trenches like the teachers and, and the staff that do it every day, I'm not in the trenches like they are. I know they have to be ready for a spring break. I know, uh, you need this, this, this week off, this time off. Um, so please, I'm encouraging you to please. Um, I know we have some principals that are so dedicated. They're going to, they're going to work, they're going to use spring break to work and catch up on things. I want to encourage them, even if you do take some time to do some work, please take some time for yourself. Um, and to, to decompress, to get away, to do something, just to detach from the school district for a little bit. Um, I do want to remind everyone that the, um, the survey for naming the schools ends on tomorrow. Uh, if you have not looked at it, if you haven't, um, thought about it, it's two elementary schools in District 3 that need a name. Um, I know one that's kind of already kind of coming out there. Um, I won't say it on, on here because I don't want to influence the vote, but however, I'm encouraging everyone to please make sure that they get their name in before the deadline on tomorrow. So again, I hope everyone have a wonderful spring break. And, um, back in the day when I was a college student on Fridays, um, they used to have this, um, commercial, and Jeremy, you probably appreciate that. Um, I won't say the commercial because I'm not promoting anything. But the, the logo was, um, you head for the mountains on the weekends. So, I'm heading for the mountains.
Don't get stuck in any bushes.
Not get caught in the bushes. It's time to go.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Yes, Board Member Thoreau.
Alrighty then. Uh, I'll just say that I appreciate the continued, um, willingness and also, um, the, ex- not even just the expectation, it is specified in our Interlocal Agreement that we shall meet. And I, of our joint meeting of elected officials and I think I shared yesterday, you know, having been in on the ground floor of, of beginning to update the Interlocal Agreement, updating the Interlocal Agreement, uh, meeting together after a way too long absence over a decade, that we are still, um, evolving. And there are going to be some meetings that will likely feel more productive than others. Um, and sure, you know, there, yesterday was underwhelming in terms of content, um, even for me, but I also still sense a bit of hesitation, you know, um, i- it's really important for, for all entities and for us to have accurate and timely information and to have all entities be willing to discuss things publicly. I, I still sense a lot of hesitation and, you know, we just brought up today about Booster. Uh, well, that was brought up in a technical working group when I was still part of it. And even in that private, more private situation, you know, I, I could tell that, or well, what are we really talking about here? I'm not really talking about anything. I, I'm, I'm trying to put some ideas forward that will benefit this community. You know, that's it. There's no ulterior motive. And, and I understand when it comes to, to data science, you know, um, it's not rocket science, but you have to have the right information. And when you have a difference in how density is being calculated, uh, between the city and the county, and then the comprehensive plan is involved and, you know, would there be any interest in changing, adjusting or tweaking the comprehensive plan? I have no idea, but just the way I think is you put everything on the table because that's what we were elected to do and, and, and work together. And I don't know, maybe there's been too many ulterior motives and agendas back in the day and, and that's what makes folks hesitant to communicate publicly. But those meetings will become more productive if everyone would just take a deep breath and, and share the challenges, share the successes and in that spirit of working together. And I maintained that through, it was more than, I don't know, 22 meetings or something, just to, you know, get it all started. So I have confidence in the process and, and it will continue, um, to improve. The last thing I'll say is, you know, it's spring break. Be safe, have fun, come back. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Board.
On time.
Thank you, Board. I, I want to thank you all, um, for showing up yesterday for our joint meeting. Everyone was present, everyone actively participated. Our staff was there to answer questions and present information. And I just want to share with you, there was quite a bit of conversation before yesterday's meeting, um, about presenting data. And the technical working group was hesitant to present any data until they were certain it was right. And so, um, just know that that, that consensus, um, did involve the county. Um, they too felt strongly about being sure to not put forth information, um, that was not correct. And so, uh, yesterday there wasn't a lot, if any, new data shared. Um, but I, I will tell you, I was happy that everybody was in the same room. It, it was nice to, um, be together and I hope, hopeful, I am hopeful that it was worth an hour and a half of everyone's time to keep me, me mov- my tongue is tight. I have been here too long. Um, to keep moving forward, for us to continue to work together to make Marion County a great place to educate and raise a family. So, so I hope that everybody found value in that. Um, I want to say thank you to everybody that presented this morning. Thank you, um, to the Sheriff and to Chief Balkin for spending their valuable time with us this morning. Chief Balkin?
And Chief Holland. Chief Holland from Bellevue?
Oh, and Chief Holland from Bellevue. Thank you. Um, I just am grateful that they took the time to be here, uh, with us uh, and share their expertise with us this morning. Um, thank you to Mr. Swallowidge and his team for those things that are, uh, programs that are being expanded in Marion County and the opportunities it presents for our students. And Mr. Tucker and Dr. Brewer for moving us forward in athletics. Um, that priority hasn't happened in a long time, so we're grateful, grateful for that. Um, lastly, uh, what I wanted to share with you, Board, is it was just so very brief. I'm sorry that the conversation got so heated because what I had to say was so very basic. And so I just wanted to share, um, that in meeting with Attorney Powers and Terry, that just to be thinking about how you as a board want to move forward. And, and what I heard today is we're interested in having FSBA come in and give us some directions. And then be thinking about, do we want to have an RFP, which is what was used before? And I am told it went very well. Um, it was a good process and things that were involved were surveys and town hall meetings. And so, um, those are all things I just shared because they were on my list. They were important to me to get, um, input from, um, the community. And so those questions, those are on, on the calendar of things they did in the past. Are we looking at a direct hire? Um, are we looking at hiring an interim? Uh, why we put out, put out an RFP? So literally those are the three or four things that I just wanted to share with you. Those are, um, options that we have moving forward. I wanted you to have the opportunity to think about them. Um, do any research that you may want, want to do and somehow to have done. And so I just wanted to share that with you, um, as we prepare for next week, um, a week and a half, two weeks, yeah, because we have a week off, uh, for spring break ahead. So looking forward for that break. I obviously need it. And so just looking, looking forward for your input when we come back on Monday. Um, I know everyone has, has a lot of ideas to share and I know that a Board Member Thrower and Board Member Cummings have been through this process. And so I'll be excited for your input and guidance as we, um, move through the process. With that, I just want to say that we have a special administrative briefing and work session on March 24th at 9:00 AM, which we've referenced several times. We have a school board meeting on March 25th at 5:30 PM. And if there is no further business, I would like-
I, I do have a question for the board since, um, the board mentioned it would like to have, um, or, or at least one board member did, and I'm hearing that from a few, you'd like to have somebody from FSBA, uh, appear for the 24th, 4th work session? Is that correct? Okay. Because this item is then one that I need, that, that, this item is one that somebody's got to put that in action. So, um, go ahead.
And what Ms. Messina told me was she would be awaiting a phone call from Chair Conrad if that's the direction the board was interested in. She would like to hear from you directly. Uh, and then once that happens, she can, depending on scheduling, certainly could either be available telephonically or by Zoom or something, or, uh, potentially even in person.
And then that raises the next point that if it were to be, um, something telephonic or by Zoom, um, we would also have perhaps some trouble integration, with integration of that. Um, so I would need to get with Mr. Christian and his production staff to figure out what, what we need to do for that. So there's, there's details of whenever we set up any kind of meeting that I, that somebody's got to do. So I want to make sure that I have as much information as possible so that in good faith, when I'm trying to do those things, I don't end up with any difficulties along the way. So Chair Conrad's going to contact, um?
I will reach out. I will, I will, um, line up and Mr. Christian, I guess I will need to visit with you because in previous conversations, I don't remember the topic, but Zoom is definitely an issue because of the audio, correct?
I just made a request to have one of the tech team members come back. Uh, we, we have a process that may work for a Zoom meeting. It will involve, it, it could involve that screen being on stage with a camera mounted on top of it. Um, the audio is fine. We can usually carry the audio through a telephone like we have done for many of you when you have not been able to attend a board meeting. It's the video component, as ironic as that sounds, because it's, it, it doesn't all go through the same conduit, if that makes sense.
Okay.
We got through COVID. We can get through this.
Yes, right? That's absolutely true. Thank you, Kevin, for starting on that so quickly.
Okay. Then along those lines also, um, I understand that we have, uh, on that administrative work session agenda, it is listed up there um, with, uh, an item title. Um, but there's essentially it's left blank as a board item for discussion, correct?
It has been created.
And it's been advertised on our website as well as we've, um?
I submitted the ad to Caligazet. Now I can put it on the website if you'd like as well.
No, Caligazet is, if it, if it went there and we've properly done it, we're-
It's early Wednesday morning.
I just want to check all the details. Thank you very much.
Reverend Cummings?
Um, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, I, I, I would just like to offer this, um, seeing that we're getting ready to have this work session on the 24th, um, seeing that, um, things have been memorialized, I would like to ask, Madam Chair, Board- I would like to ask Madam Chair, Board, that if the legal department could just put us together a packet of what happened last time, what the process was, what that timeline was, those things that happened. It doesn't have to be anything long, but that would be something that we all could look at.
Yeah.
Prior to coming to the meeting.
Upload it.
And it would be, it would be.
Well, you do know I'm about to send my entire crew, crew off on a spring break for a week here and, and, and I've, and, and our, our legal department is currently, uh, half my department is ill at the moment as well. So, and, uh, I'll, I'll be, I'll be working.
Thank you. And I think, I, I just think that would be helpful for all of us.
Now, that being said, that packet, I, I'll do what I can, but I don't know that I'll be able to upload such historical packet.
It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be all that stuff, but just a.
Just like a one pager?
A summary of, of how things went, what timeline we went.
Yeah, there was a timeline.
Yeah. And that's, and I think that would be so helpful for the conversation. I think that would help those that were here and those that were not here.
Right. And honestly, and, and I, I mostly have that kind of completed because it was kind of what I was asked to do for, for board comments today.
Yes, thank you, Board Member Thrower.
Couple of one pages of straightforward visuals. I think that just helps people.
Anything else from the board? Okay. With no further business, we will adjourn at 12:12. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.